Good afternoon, everyone. We're right at 1:00 P. M. I think we're just waiting for our chair to join. She should be on momentarily and we'll be getting started. Thank you. Okay, I see our chair has joined us now. Madam Chair, we're ready to get started whenever you are.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. We're great to start it. Today is Wednesday, December the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The time is now one oh three P. M. We're going to get started with the District of Columbia Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting today. I just want to remind everyone that this is a virtual meeting and we have virtual decor. If you are speaking, I'm going to ask that everyone else mute their microphones. And if you actually get an opportunity to speak as a public witness, I'm going to ask that you respect our decor. No yelling, no streaming, no speaking inappropriately to anyone. If so, we will ask you not to be on the call. We're going to get started now. I'm going to turn it over directly to Alithia. So we can do the roll call.
Yes, ma'am. I would do a roll call now for a forum. Commissioner Strickland. Thank you. Commissioner Slover.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Council.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson.
Present.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, Bussy Reader.
Present.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have twelve commissioners present. You have a forum.
Thank you so very much. I failed to take a moment of silence. We want to pause just for a moment of silence. Recognizing all of those who've supported us in this work and are longer with us. Thank you. Want to go straight to the approval of our minutes. The November ninth Board of Commissioners meeting and the November twenty-ninth Emergency Board meeting. Do we have any corrections or changes to the minutes? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept.
Thank you. The minutes have been accepted and approved. We're going to go straight into our resolutions. I'm going to turn it over to our executive director.
Madam Chair, I think I'm going to do my director's report first. Quickly, if that's what the board prefers. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you. So it's a short report. Couple of things I do want to highlight. So you can go to the next slide. We have two resolutions before the board today for action and one is to authorize a contract for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, preventive maintenance and repairs, and water treatment services. We discussed that round back. Commissioners, we do have an amended resolution with that additional paragraph that you should have now or hopefully coming to you. I think it did come to you. So if you want to take a look at that before we discuss that item for your vote and let us know if you have any questions. And then the second one, very pleased to present to the board is to authorize fifty-five million dollars in new market tax credits that benefit community-based organizations, schools, and other programs that benefit our residents. And that resolution is just the board to approve acceptance of those funds. Want to give an update on our HUD work plan and I'm also going to invite Commissioner Lee to chime in if she wishes. We, I think everyone knows, submitted our response and associated work plan on November twenty-ninth, which was the sixty-day deadline. We have been working diligently with our consultants and at various program levels to start implementing the actions that we have in the work plan so that we can meet all of the deadlines. We did meet with HUD on December thirteenth, not on the eleventh, it was Sunday, but we met with them yesterday. And this, the, for a work session and to get their initial feedback on our submission. It was an all-day meeting with the program staff from HCB or the program leads from HCBP, PMO, Procurement, our General Counsel, Dennis Sabasco, who of course is leading this effort. Our consultants were also there and/or virtually and Nona Eath to talk about our responses for PMO. It was a long and very detailed session. We went through findings, each of the findings. Our responses had questions, if they had any on our responses, additional information, if they needed any. And we thought it was a very, very productive meeting. The, at the end of the day, the recap from HUD, and when I say HUD in this meeting, Marilyn O'Sullivan, who is the Director of the Field Office, she's the Regional Director of Field Offices, so the D.C. Field Office is under her, and Patricia McKnight, who actually led the onsite review back in March, and then two staff from the MTW office, John Kincanon and Chris, I don't remember his last name, but he's our point person on MTW. So that was the HUD review team. We got an immediate readout from Ms. Sullivan that she thought it was a productive meeting, that I was, that we've been very responsive, cooperative, and that they have noted progress already. They were very pleased, Commissioner Lee, that you were able to join and speak to the board's participation in the responses and your commitment to work with us to make sure that we implement all of the things that we're required to implement and move them through the board processes. The, we will be meeting with the HUD team. We will, first, we will have a monthly report, basically a status report on each item, a big spreadsheet, we will give updates on each of the steps, and then have a monthly meeting with them more if necessary over the next three months. I'm going to pause for a minute and ask Commissioner Lee to chime in, and then we can keep going.
Sure. So I was really happy that I could join yesterday. I had an opportunity to spend the first two hours of the meeting and the tone of the meeting was very collaborative. It was a very positive meeting with dialogue and just an opportunity to be very open about what the findings, what the intent was, to look at documentation in real time and at least what we went over, the housing choice voucher section for the time I was there. Again, I thought that process highly collaborative, and I'd like to just underscore two comments that Marilyn O'Sullivan shared with respect to the work that, her observations. First, she complimented Director Donald and the staff on the format and the way that they put the package together and the response and the sharepoint. She was very pleased with how everything was organized and the ease of being able to go through the documentation. So again, just wanting to give a huge acknowledgement to Director Donald and the staff on putting all of the responses together. Wonderful job done and very nice to hear that compliment from the HUD team. And a second compliment that Ms. O'Sullivan shared, when the HUD React team came out, she was very complimentary around the responsiveness of the Housing Authorities team to the HUD Reacts team's participation in going through units. So again, it was a very positive meeting, a wonderful opportunity to hear from HUD and hear about how they are our partners, they're a resource, and they're here to help see the authorities succeed.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and thanks for adding that feedback on React. They said that we have mitigated almost all of the React findings. There are a few where they have to come back out because they either couldn't access the units, but there was some additional work, but the majority have been mitigated, and that is thanks to Nona Eath, Jeter, and the whole PMO team. But again, as Commissioner Lee said, HUD is really working with us. They're offering advice in terms of what some other jurisdictions have done, particularly around our waitlist management. They think that we're making things way too complicated and we'll be coming back to the board, maybe with some recommendations around that. They reiterated, as we all know, that the biggest priority is beyond the compliance activities in the report are unit conditions and occupancy. And as everyone knows, those are our top priorities as well. I have, want to go to the next slide so we can talk about what we're going to do differently in those areas. So here is our occupancy update. Not a lot of progress since November, but something still moving in the right direction. We had eighty applicants in this past month who completed eligibility, and I know that we had a big turnout last, just last week, which would go to December, hopefully, in terms of the number of people responding to the outreach and coming in to update their eligibility. Again, we know this is not moving fast enough, and so we have some new strategies. Next one. So, one big new strategy that we're going to implement in, starting in January and actually on January sixth and for the next couple of months, will allow us to get through all of the remaining people on the public housing waitlist. So far, we have we have contacted or done outreach to almost six thousand applicants. We still have a low turnout in terms of people who then accept the invitations or receive the invitations and come in for their appointments. About twenty percent typically for each pull. So we're going to have a big session on January sixth where we're going to do outreach to five thousand applicants and have an eligibility and lease-up day on that day. We'll have staff in an all-hands-on-deck mode and we'll be ready to do the eligibility updates and to make referrals and matches on that date. We'll be able to report back to seeing what our turnout, how our turnout has been and what the uptake has been, but we do this each month. For the next three months, we'll be able to at least get through everyone who was on the public housing waitlist, and then at some point, hopefully, we will be able to open up that waitlist for people, just new, for new applicants interested in public housing. We have to go through the entire waitlist that everyone knows is very, very dated, but we're making our way, and so this is a way to do a search. Also, in terms of the waitlist, and this is more on the voucher side, that we actually have some new federal vouchers that we're going to be making available to applicants who are interested in vouchers. And we have, we were allocated sixty new MTW vouchers from HUD this year. We also have another four hundred and sixteen vouchers that are available for us to use, and I think we talked about this, may have been in a committee meeting, but we're able to fund these through HUD-held reserves that are allocated for DCHA based on underutilization of vouchers. These new vouchers will allow us to get much closer to meeting substantially the same goals in our MTW plan. So we have, our focus is on reducing the waitlist, we're getting through the waitlist for people interested in public housing. We'll also be able to have new opportunities for folks who are on the list for federal vouchers. Also, thanks to the City Council, we have dedicated allocations for seniors fifteen and twenty for other waitlist applicants that we are going to do outreach so that we can get those vouchers allocated. So all of this will result in a lot more people being housed over these next, hopefully, few months. Okay, the second priority area is improving the residents' quality of life across our entire portfolio. We have been focused over the years in redevelopment, longer-term activities, and in make-ready vacant units. And we know that we have to focus more diligently on the units where our residents currently live. We did, of course, this summer blitz and caught up on a lot of outstanding work orders, but that's not enough. And as we've reported, while we moved through fourteen, fifteen thousand, we still have nine thousand outstanding, and we have other issues that are way more complicated and longer-term issues. So we have a plan to do this over this next year, starting hopefully in January, when we'll be coming back to the board with recommendations to approve a new suite of contractors, including inspectors and contract management teams to do this accelerated maintenance plan. The plan kind of breaks down into several different buckets. One is to make sure that we stay on top of and clear up the other outstanding work orders, but then stay on top of work orders. That we do the unit inspections. We're going to inspect every single unit within our portfolio. So this is not going in a selected order, doing a few randomly here or there. It's every single unit, starting with those who are, that are occupied. Then there may be some where we would have to make short-term moves for residents or moves within the same property. We often hear from our residents that we have renovated units on their properties and those units are sitting vacant, and they're asking us, well, what are you waiting for and who are these units for? Well, they're for them. And we're not going to hold units waiting for the longer-term redevelopment, even though we do have some as part of our redevelopment plans, but our immediate focus is going to be on our current residents. And if their unit conditions are such that it requires several months' worth of work, then we're going to offer opportunities to move onsite within their own properties and make sure that, that, that we meet their needs in that way without any, any any displacements, but that will be in consultation with the residents. In addition, we're going to continue with renovating our vacant units because, of course, that allows us to increase occupancy as we're pulling people off the waitlist. And the plan, as we've discussed with the board before, is to use contractors who have already been vetted and gone through a competitive selection process by the Department of General Services, but we will be contracting with them directly. And just to be clear, early on, we were thinking of some MOU with DGS and we're not, we are not going in that direction. We will actually be contracting directly, which is why we have to come to the board, hopefully, for approval. The, the funding for these contracts are within our own capital and repair and maintenance budgets. We're going to reprogram some funds and we'll be able to talk about that and what the rationale for doing that as when we come back to the board. Quick update on our headquarters. So eleven thirty-three is now closed to the public. We'll be finally out of the building Friday and turning it over to the new developers. The, we've made accommodations for mail and for ensuring that our customers are able to still get served. So we have customer service centers now open for appointments at the Frederick Douglass Center and the Southwest Family Enhancement Center. Our new customer service center at three hundred seventh Street is getting its final touches and furniture coming in. That will be complete soon. I believe that we'll be moving into there in January, and stay tuned for a ribbon cutting for that facility. We're very excited. I think our residents will be pleased with the design, the utility, and the comfort of that particular center. But again, our goal is to make sure that residents and other customers can get their needs met with, throughout the city and remotely if possible, and if preferred. So we'll have more centers, and we're also moving towards having more automated processes. The Office of Public Safety will soon move into its new location, another open house and ribbon-cutting opportunity that's at fifteen fifteen New York Avenue. So stay tuned for that. And then we, because we've done, been able to move in parallel with closing our old building, opening up swing space, and planning for our new, our new headquarters, both Public Safety and our main headquarters, that we have earned ourselves a bonus of about twelve million dollars as part of that deal for headquarters. Really want to acknowledge Trenita Hardeman-Jones, who has led this effort and is still very actively involved, all the way down to helping to clear out things at eleven thirty-three. But certainly, she's leading the planning with our architects and our contractors as our new facilities get built out, as well as transitioning out of the old, doing all of the the planning to make sure that we don't miss a beat. And so this has been a huge effort and will continue to be as our space at three hundred seventh Street gets built out on the tenth and eleventh, ninth, tenth, and eleventh floors over the next four, five months. We continue to have our resident engagement activities and a family self-sufficiency workshop in November. OSHA training at the Envision Center in November as well, and then youth ambassadors and STEM sessions happen in November. And then I wanted to acknowledge a very productive meeting that I had at the request and invitation of the new citywide advisory board, and that was on December fifth. And I believe Ms. Burbage has signed up to speak, so I won't steal her thunder, but it was a very constructive and productive conversation about how we work together and how the citywide advisory board really is being rebuilt and will be taking up its leadership on behalf of residents and advising both the executive side of the House as well as the board or resident issues. And then, I think we have a few holiday activities. We did our Thanksgiving meals to our seniors, and some of us also participated in some turkey giveaways and other meal distributions. Go ahead to the next one. The, looking ahead, we have a ribbon cutting for Northwest One, which was the new building that has been delivered for, as part of the new communities, the first new communities where our residents have been relocated for many, many years, and several have opted to come back. That ribbon cutting is on next Monday. And then also in the next week, we will have our gift of love celebration with toy distributions to to families and throughout our properties. I hope we have sent you around the sign-up information. If any commissioners want to participate, that's always a fun and feel-good activity. We have a partner, a wider circle, that provides us with thousands of gifts, and families look forward to that. And that's the end of my report. Thanks. Yes.
Thank you, Brenda. I want to acknowledge the work of your team along with Commissioner Lee. Thank you so very much for their work on the HUD report. And additionally to your staff for everything that you guys are doing. I'm excited about the maintenance blitz. Looking forward to seeing our residents more pleased with the improved properties and homes that they would be living in. So thank you again for that. Staying along the agenda, do I have any other comments from any other commissioners regarding? I see a couple of hands, Commissioner Hoffman and then Commissioner Council.
Yeah, I, I just have one question, which is HUD said you were making the waiting list operation too complicated. Are you implementing some changes and what are the changes they said you should make?
Thank you, Commissioner. We will have to come back to the board to talk about the way that we've been managing the waitlist. Part of it has been governed by a resolution passed by the board some years ago about the process of purging the waitlist and the requirement to keep people on the waitlist, even if they have been contacted and haven't updated their information. HUD says, as far as they know, no one else across the country does this, that they will send notices to waitlist applicants and let, tell them that they are responsible for updating their information and checking in, and that if they've been contacted and haven't responded over a period of time, that other jurisdictions purge them from the waitlist. We do have a resolution that, you know, constrains that, and we wanted to discuss that with the board, the pros and cons of that after HUD gives us a little bit of, a little bit more guidance on how it's done in other jurisdictions. After HUD gives us a little bit of, a little bit more guidance on how it's done in other jurisdictions.
When you started this sort of strong push to find people on the waiting list, you did some public service announcements and the like. Is that part of the plan going forward or not?
No, I think we can revisit that. We, we got a small response from that. I think a few thousand people who updated their information. And it's something that we certainly can do. And I think it's something we should do pretty regularly and just invite people to, to update their information. We're really hoping with this big push for the 5,000, that people will see we're serious and that we really do have public housing units available for them. And that as they hear and see that more people are starting to move in, I think that is also something that we should promote as people move in. We do have public housing units available and the companion piece with that, of course, is the maintenance. Because a lot of people don't want to hear about, you know, how poor our units are and the condition of our properties. And they make choices about, you know, that are not interested. So as, as those two things come together, I mean, we're going to start to see a, a, a change in responsiveness.
Thank you.
Commissioner Council, Commissioner Slover, and then Commissioner Skinner.
Thank you. In your report, Director Donald, you were saying that we're out of, that we're out of 1133 as of Friday, but you've moved the center in two different locations. Can we embellish the directions? Because I am getting phone calls from our constituents where they don't know how to find, especially down southwest. And a lot of the people, they don't know the areas. So can we embellish it with some signs or balloons or something? So when they're there, or even give them the nearest bus line or a subway that's nearest to them to help them? Because we're dealing with seniors as well. So this is, this is a culture that they're jumping into. And I need clarity. When you went before DC Council, you said the incentive of selling 1133 was 14. You told us 12 today. So what, what, which is it?
Right. And if John Sarah is on, he can clarify. So the 14 was if we were out, like in, we are out in the first year, but because we didn't move out immediately on, when we closed in May. So there's a kind of prorated amount that occurs over each month. And I'll ask John Sarah to clarify that. And to your point about the communications and the signage, I know we are enhancing that and that, making sure that we have that information. It is of course posted on our website, but also doing more signage and the other things that you suggested. So thank you for that. John, do you want to talk about the incentive bonus?
Sure. Thank you, Director. And thank you, Commissioner Council, for your question. That is true. The total amount was 13.7 million dollars. And that is if we vacated the next day. Each month, we stayed at 1133 was incurring an amount for rent. And that amount was actually increasing over time. So the longer we stayed, the more we would have incurred. So since we're vacating now in December, we believe the net proceeds will be about $12 million. We're communicating right now with the buyers to get the actual balance, the ending balance for, for that. And we will update the board when we have that ending balance firmly.
How soon can the board, not just me, but how soon can the board get the bill of sale to 1133?
I know we were looking into that because you raised that at the, at the brown bag. So it's making sure that we give you the right documentation that you're asking for. So we, you raised that just about an hour ago, so we're looking into that to get that to you quickly.
Is there a timeline?
I'm not sure what.
So Ms. Barnes?
Lori Barnes, General Counsel, Commissioner Council. Again, as far as the, the sale of the property, again, there's more of a lease, a ground lease, documents that, again, we have, there is no bill of sale. There is no such thing when it comes to selling land and property. But we can be able to review what it is that we think that you're asking for, what information that we think that you're getting. There's, it's not a bill of sale. Again, it's not selling something like a, a car, something, a small piece of property. So we can be able to look, so we can provide you the information that we think that you need. Because there's nothing else that is outside of the information provided, obviously, in the resolutions.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. I think it's Commissioner Slover is next.
Thanks. Appreciate it. So I, yeah, I look forward to seeing how the waiting list situation shakes out. It looks like you're doing some good work there. Thank you on that front. I wanted to ask one question about the occupancy slide. And particularly, what are the 566 exempt units? What, what are, what are those? Can we, I don't have this.
Can you pull that up? Or in, in, Ms. Eath, can you speak to that, please?
All right. So those exempted units that we have, the 566, those are units that are in some type of HUD status that HUD has approved us to be in, undergoing modernization, associated with administrative services. Also for resident activity rooms, such as their resident council offers and things of that nature. Casualty loss units. We have some type of fire disaster in a unit. We have, HUD allows us the ability to take those offline. And so that's what that makes up is the 566 units. And those units don't count towards our vacancy rate that you see in the unit count.
That's, that's, that's helpful. Could you maybe get a further detailed breakdown? How many of those units? So I understand if it's a resident council offer, something less likely that we'll ever put somebody in there. Understandable, we need those spaces for those functions. But maybe we could just get an understanding of the 566, how many we could potentially bring back online to house residents and how many, you know, we're always going to be in that exempt category. Just so that we know the totality of what we have in terms of what we can do for future occupancy. I think that would be beneficial as we sort of continue to drill into what, what we have in terms of an inventory or, or, or public housing. That'd be helpful. And the other question I have is for you, Director Donald, and this is not to be answered right now. The consultant, CSG, there was a lot of questions about them. And I think just from the board's perspective, it'd be great to just sort of understand how they're engaged, like what their scope of work is, what their deliverables are, what their timeline is, you know, the general costs. And making sure that, you know, ZMPED is, is fully committed to, you know, paying the entirety of the, of what they're engaged to do. Just so that we have a, you know, some, some understanding that, 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 what they're doing. I know it's been fast. I mean, we've responded very quickly to HUD and getting on the ground and all. But, you know, me sitting here today, I really don't know sort of what their scope of work is. So I think that would be something we as a board should know. So if you, if you could just provide that to us at some point. Again, it's the scope of work, deliverables, how long we expect them to be on the ground, the size of the team. You know, that, again, general costs, that would be helpful.
Yes, we will be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Slover, Commissioner Skinner and Commissioner Council. Do you still have your hand up? You have another question.
Yes, I, I would like to know.
Let me, let me, let Commissioner Skinner go and then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
I just have a quick question for Director Donald regarding the occupancy of the new space. You said that the customer service center, I think, would be open in January. When will the rest of the space be completed so the remaining staff can, can, can move in? One, and then secondly, and more importantly, when will the boardroom be ready? Because I would like to see us go to move to in-person meetings as quickly as possible.
Okay. So our space is scheduled to be completed around May, right Shanita? May and the, the boardroom facilities are available to the board right now. So it's up to the board to decide when you want to start coming back in person. I know the chair talked about moving meetings off to some of them, rotating around on the properties. Imagine that. So that will all be decided. But the board facilities are available to the board, to the board decide to have in-person meeting, or whenever the board decides to have in-person meetings.
Yes, Brenda, you're absolutely correct. I think it's important that we go to our sites. So I would like to move into a posturing in a new year, that we actually move to each property to host our meetings. But we can definitely start meeting in public sooner rather than later. So thank you for that, Commissioner Skinner. Commissioner Council?
I, I asked the question and I'm, I'm gonna try it again. I need clarity. We got a lot of moving parts. We have a number of what's vacant, what's not vacant. And I need to understand from what we have put in resolution to HUD of how we were going to demo the units in certain properties. We are now, or I'm asking, has that procedure been changed? If so, it has not come back to the board for us to do a new resolution because you all are just pulling boards back off of properties that have been declared to be demoed, not just rehabbed, but we have mostly demoed. So that's my question. I need clarity because you're pulling from the waiting list, but yet we're supposed to be emptying out certain sites to demo and rebuild. So who would have the answer?
I think we have to get back to you because as far as I know, we're not, if, if a site has been approved for demo dispo, that does come through board, as you said, and then goes to HUD. We're not reusing those, those particular sites and those are very specific and we can provide a list. But the ones that are deep, okay, are you asking something else? You're shaking your head.
Me?
Yes, I thought you were.
I'm listening to you.
Yeah, no. So I don't, and let's, Nona or OCP can talk about that. I don't know that we are taking boards off and repurposing units that have been approved for, for demolition.
No, we have not. So the practice is that as a unit becomes vacant, that we should be, that the program is boarding up those units. Because we're not doing anything with them and try to keep people from going in there that don't belong in there. So when we start pulling those off, that means that we're ready to start doing some type of modernization or make ready effort to get somebody moved in there. Just because the board's on there doesn't mean that it's approved for that. I will check in reference to those that have been proved, demolition, and bring that back to the board.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Before we go into our resolutions, I see our council member Anita Barnes is on the call. Want to be respectful and give her an opportunity. Did you want to speak now, council member Barnes? You just wanted to let us know that you're here. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. And it is a pleasure to be here with you. Usually my staff is on. But I thought to end this year right, it's time for me to show you that I also am listening and want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. We don't need to go over what has transpired. We just need to not only make a commitment, but to show that we are moving in the right direction. And it sounds like from the conversations had yesterday between the authority and HUD, that we, we are moving in the right direction. And so that I'm sure is music to all of our ears. But it doesn't happen in the blind. We have to remain vigilant. And as we all know, the concerns that have been shared through the HUD assessment and previous years have been ongoing. And when HUD decided 15 years ago that it was going to de-escalate resources going towards the repairs and maintenance of public housing, it hurt across the nation in every, every part of our country. And then they said, well, okay, let's have public-private partnership. And let's take the management of our properties and put them perhaps in the hands of or co-management with the private sector. And so we haven't seen a lot of rewards from that, at least the programs that have been featured. And I can tell you firsthand, I can talk a little bit about Off the Caper and some of the comments I've gotten from citizens who live there. But, and we, we can talk about that at some other point because it is pretty detailed. And so then we said, HUD said, okay, let's, let's turn our attention to funding vouchers. And of course, the housing choice vouchers can be used anywhere in the United States. And we have a fair housing law that says they should be welcomed. But it has been a little tedious in many instances. So I commend you for all the work that you're doing, you know, as a board and those who are on as staff. Because I know it is not easy. It sounds easy, but we all know it's not easy to deal with housing. We know from our own apartments or our homes that it's not easy. There's always something more to be done. But we want to get this, this straight. And thank you, Chairwoman. I didn't plan on making a statement. I just wanted you to know I was here. But you, you got me going, you know, the, the mood is there. And so I am here to do whatever I can do. And I do mean that, you know, from my heart to make this better. I'm very familiar with public housing. Kimmy Gray I knew pretty well and many others and, and worked with them. So this is, this is something that's very important to us all. And again, thank you very much. And happy holidays because I probably won't see you again. But happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you so much, council member. We appreciate your time. I have one question for you, Brenda, that came from the wand. He's actually traveling, so he can't, he's in and out. His internet keeps going in and out. He wants to know how can we donate gifts to the toy drive?
That is a great question. Cheryl Robinson is over our, our customer service operations that reports to Jenna. Jenna, did we have a specific way to do that? Or should we just send a follow-up email to the board?
Let me circle back shortly. I know she was getting gifts from an organization. I want to just check in and see where we are.
Okay, thank you. If you can just let us all know, Jenna, that would be helpful. Thank you. And again, thank you, council member Barnes, for your time and for your comments. We appreciate you. We're going to continue to move forward unless I see any other questions regarding the executive directive report or my commissioners. Okay, we're gonna, I'm sorry, you guys. We're gonna move. I'm trying not to cough too much. We're gonna move to the resolutions. Brenda?
Yes, and I think what the first one is the HVAC resolution. And I want to make sure that, that the board members got the revised memo with the addition of the paragraph that we discussed in Brown Bag. I know it just came right before this meeting.
Yes, it was sent out. We got it.
Yes, it was sent out. We got it.
Then Lori, are you reading the resolution or Kimberly? I forgot.
I, I can read it. I'm sorry. I can read it. Good afternoon, everybody. Resolution, Resolution 22-36 is to authorize a three-year contract for heating, ventilation and air conditioning preventative maintenance and repair services. It's in response to DCHA's solicitation RFP number eleven dash twenty-two. Um, there were two respondents to the solicitation and as a result of the evaluation process. Um, the award recommendation is to award the contract to RSC Electrical and Mechanical Contractors. In the amount of five million four hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars for the three-year term.
Okay, um, so.
Do we have any, any people to speak to that, Alithia?
I don't think so. Alithia, do we have anyone on this one?
We actually have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A resident that has signed up, Ms. Patricia Bishop, who would like to speak on this particular uh resolution. Uh, she's also signed up for the next one as well. Uh, do you want to have her make her comments on both resolutions now?
Oh, she said no. She wants to do it separately. She shook her head. So Ms. Bishop, you can go. You can move forward now with your testimony.
Okay, good evening, everyone. On the HVAC. Once I just heard her state the amount of money, is that actually enough money? To repair and do the work that needs to be done on each one of public housing properties within that year time? I think she said three. That's one of the questions. Can I have an answer?
Yes ma'am, um, the RNS contract only services a specific number of properties. The, I believe most of the senior um buildings and then our PMO staff with other dollars. Services the family properties. Um, Ms. E, did I say that right or did you need to add anything?
That's correct Director.
So if the money that is going to be used for the senior property is not used up. Will that also come to the other properties because we have seniors in our properties also? That needs these type of repairs done?
Oh yes, no, no, I'm sorry. Let me clarify, Ms. Bishop.
Okay.
They're, they are assigned to service um those particular buildings with preventive maintenance. And um repairs, replacing the filters and all of that. Our PMO staff is responsible for servicing all of our other properties, including everyone who lives there. So if you're a senior on a family property, then you you'll be under the the servicing of our, our PMO staff. And they have separate funds that will go towards that.
And there, you're saying there's two different lists, lists, senior properties, family properties. Um, is that list available to resident council and management? To know which properties is going to have this type of work done? Cause my biggest concern still here at two oh three is people are constantly not having a proper amount of heat. For the temperature that is going on, giving them radiators and others that. People who come in and look at it to try to see what the problem is, is telling them, oh, they need a whole new heating system in their units. In order to have the proper heat in their units. So is that type of work gonna also be put on there and like maybe y'all start in January, but it's getting colder. And these people are coming to me with the complaints over and over about their units not having a proper heat. Not just to read at the radiators, but for them to be in the center of the floor. And don't have that type of heat throughout because the windows are right there. And maybe the heat is going directly out of the windows because these units are, these radiators are old. Are they included in that?
Miss um, Ms. E, and yes, we will give you the list so that everyone knows who's servicing their properties. We'll provide the list to the, to the resident council um presidents, absolutely. Um, Ms. E, you could talk about how we respond immediately because certainly in the cold weather, if there are any issues with heat, we don't wait. Go ahead.
And uh, how long, I'm sorry, and the other question was how long uh the people who are probably in public housing? Or under section eight? Being having the proper filters for their units that are inside of there. Because for months they have already acknowledged that they haven't had a change. And being the buildup of the dust and the collection over these not being changed, it's going to constantly be a buildup. So to have them just come in, when they come in to reschedule this timeframe. To maybe some places needed every two weeks. Because when I had a house, I had to change minds every two weeks. Because of the respiratory and the dust and the filter that goes through those systems. We can't keep breathing it. And that's my main concern of people's health from now on, to be first.
Can you respond? Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Yes, so in reference to heat issues is that if there's a heat issue that's called as an emergency. And staff will uh come out to actually do temperatures throughout, not just the unit that's experiencing the issue, but check temperatures around. To see if there's a rebalancing or something that's needed in the system itself. Uh, we can have somebody come out uh to check the heating system at the property today to see where we are on that.
Yes, Ms. E, thank you because you know, we have came and did what we had to do, but the problem has continued to happen. And for the tenants to have to keep calling over and over about the same issue. Plus the other issues in some of the same apartments. With this heat situation and other situations, it's keep recurring. There must come a end so that these people who are paying their rent be properly housed. They was told, and they told me once, when they called and had it reported. That this has happened again and again and again, to give their radiators. When they are required to have a certain amount of heat in their unit, that is very unfair to the tenants. And I'm really. Not trying to come down on anybody, but if they say they did the paperwork and this was need to be done and the proper people need to have this. To get it done, somebody is overlooking my tenants. And I just wanted to stop because it's frustrating them, it's frustrating me. And I'm trying my best not to get so emotional that I change the tone of my voice. In any disrespectful way to get kicked off. Uh, really cannot keep expression enough is enough of forcing us to live this way. And that's not just my property, that's every property. These situations didn't just start when you came or when Donalds came. These has been reported for years. And have been overlooked. I really would appreciate it before the winter. Is that this situation gets resolved permanently? That's what I'm asking, that's what my tenants are asking, that's what other tenants are asking. You notice that people don't even get up here anymore because they're tired of repeating their self-talking. But until I can keep standing up, getting into trouble for everybody. We cannot and will not continue to be overlooked on a mental level, on a physical level. On an emotional level. We have suffered long enough. Let's get this done.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. We we appreciate you and and that's one of the reasons why we have this resolution up today. We hear you and and as you heard Brenda state earlier, we're doing our very best to do this maintenance blitz as well as this HVAC system. We hear you and we don't want you to suffer any further. Thank you. I'm so sorry for that. We hear you. Thank you. Um, if there's no additional public comments, we can move. For board action, I'm sorry. I see Commissioner Parker, you have a.
Think you need a motion.
Yeah, we, Commissioner um.
Second and then discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I was about to say, we got a Commissioner Parker, before we can actually entertain any more discussions, we need a motion. You want to give a motion and then we can have the discussion.
Motion.
Motion, second.
All right. So we're now have, we can open it up for discussion. Now, Commissioner Parker. Do we have to do a roll call? I'm sorry. No, all right, Commissioner Parker, then Commissioner Slover.
Am I to speak now, Ms. Reader?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay, um, I just wanted to make a statement for the record. Um, I'm very concerned about the HUD DC review on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. HUD has alleged that we lack adequate monitoring contributing to the DCHA failure to comply with the HUD program requirements. There definitely needs to be more oversight, management and tracking of critical financial management and procurement functions. HUD has maintained that the DCHA is not conducting sufficient contract administration and quality assurance of. RSC's work. RSC Electrical and Mechanical Contractors are specifically mentioned in the HUD report in finding PH twenty-nine. Under regulatory citation twenty-four CFR five point seven oh three. HUD states that the boiler rooms at Hopkins Apartments, Potomac Gardens and James Apartments. Were not being maintained in a manner that meets the physical condition standards. To be considered decent, safe, sanitary and in good repair. Our residents in all of our buildings, family properties and those for seniors and disabled. All deserve proper heating, ventilation and air conditioning as well as safe and sanitary conditions of their housing. Both Potomac Garden Senior and James Apartments are designated as seniors disabled. I directly represent these residents in my position as Commissioner for Senior and Disabled. I am deeply concerned that we as an agency has not lived up to our mission to provide safe. Sanitary and well-maintained housing for this vulnerable population. The DCHA management must routinely monitor the work of contractors. To ensure that they are completing their tasks correctly and in a timely fashion. HUD inspection showed all boiler rooms to have leaks and corrosion was evident. The previous contract was for three years. This new contract will cover James Apartments, Horizon, Claridge, Kentucky Court. Fort Lincoln, Judiciary, Potomac Gardens and other senior disabled properties. A planned schedule and assigned responsibilities for addressing the maintenance and repair problems. Has not been presented to the Board of Commissioners. So I will not be supporting additional contracts to this provider because of quality concerns. And for the safety of the DCHA janitorial staff and residents. Contracts should not be awarded based on conflicts of interest. But instead, based on which contractor will do a good job for our residents. There were two contractors who met the qualifications and bid on this contract. Yet the Board of Commissioners is being asked to give a five-point-four million dollar contract. To the very contractor who was already identified by HUD in doing a poor job for our residents. I have not seen a full accounting of the reasons for these failures. Whether it is the fault of the DCHA staff's lack of oversight or the fault of the contractor. We need a contractor who keeps these crucial systems in good repair. And maintains safe, sanitary and decent conditions for our residents to live in. There needs to be greater communication between the contractor and DCHA maintenance staff. The contractor should be providing monthly reports, supportive documentation. And monthly billing invoices. Without this documentation, we do not know whether work is being done. In addition, there needs to be a quality control checklist used by DCHA staff. And daily, weekly and monthly checks on maintenance of items in the boiler rooms and elsewhere. And in the air conditioning systems. DCHA executive leadership should provide the necessary training for staff. To use the appropriate checklist and adequate due diligence and oversight monitoring the contract. DCHA needs enforcement of the contract terms to ensure that the work is done in a timely. And in a quality manner. And I would, I have a copy of this to send to the Chairman of the Board to be uh put in the written. Uh, minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the reasons why the memo was sent out Janet because it clearly explains that this was a. Internal management concern and not the contractor, but we hear your concern and I accept the memo that you're going to provide. Commissioner Slover?
Appreciate the opportunity. Um, in reading the memo, it actually isn't crystal clear. That uh, DCHA was responsible. Um, at least the way I read it. So um, it actually doesn't assign. Uh, responsibility to relate to anybody, it just says that there'll be corrective actions in the future. Um, I certainly agree with a lot of what Commissioner Parker said and I appreciate her saying it. But I wanted to ask one specific question about. It's unclear, so when I do a lot of the property tours, I think uh Commissioner Hoffman may have mentioned this earlier. One of the biggest complaints when you go into people's units is their filter, the ones who have interior unit uh HVAC system units is the filters do not. Get changed. And I was under the, I was not under the impression that this vendor did that. And now I think I heard at the end of the last meeting that they do. Can, can, can someone affirm that they do have that responsibility, this vendor?
Ms. E?
Good afternoon. The contractor, uh, the awarded contractor will have responsibility for maintenance. And preventive maintenance and oversight for the properties listed in the solicitation. If it is a property outside of that listing. PMO staff is responsible for the upkeep in reference to those systems and individual units. Especially those at family sites. They're responsible for changing the filters. And that's why we're going into a preventive maintenance plan to be able to document that filters are being changed on a regular basis.
So. Does that, that leads me to my next question is. Were there significant complaints or complaints at all? On the properties that this vendor managed about that specific thing, the filters? Uh, any complaints at all, um, documents, document the complaints? Because, you know, that is a huge issue um for, for health and concern. So is there any? I'm getting back to a question asked earlier, which was, or the previous meeting was. Did this company perform well under its last, under its last contract? Were there a lot of complaints or not?
So I don't have any documented uh complaints and reference to it, but again. We're back to if DCHA communicated to the contractor. Not to do work. The contractor is only following the direction of the agency.
Well, I, 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 I understand specific to the, to the HUD finding, the three, three HUD, the, the three properties in HUD finding. I'm talking about a broader issue, sort of day-to-day maintenance. And I think, you know, looking back may not be as productive as trying to put in guardrails moving forward. And so maybe, you know, as part of, after this is approved. Maybe you guys can commit to delivering to the board sort of uh, what the monthly reporting would look like. From the, from the vendor, um, saying, you know, you're identifying the number of, as, as an example, maybe getting into the granularity of. How many interior units do, do they have to service and how many filters are in those interior units? I mean, we need to get to that level of detail, I think, on this particular contract. Because this is an enormous part of living, we all know, having heat and air conditioning. HVAC is an important part of where we live. And so I think the granularity we need is down to that detail of can we get. By committed by the end of the month, can you deliver to the board? How they're going to report back to you and and what detail? I think that would be super helpful um, in terms of getting a level of comfort. And then. On, so would, is there opportunity to get out of this contract? In other words, if there isn't performance, um, do we have kickouts? Because obviously, this is a critical thing. We can't, we got, we got, you know, we can't not do this. But at the same time, we want to make sure we have. But at the same time, we want to make sure we have options to, to cure if needed.
Absolutely, Commissioner Slover. That is a part of the contract that the contract can be terminated for convenience.
Okay, so Director Donald.
And also for default or non-performance. Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Can we get a commitment from the agency to sort of. In, in a reasonable amount of time to get some sort of a template of some sort that you guys are going to use with the vendor.
Absolutely.
Or, and maybe that can be part of Operations Committee or whomever so that the board can, can look into that and make sure, because again. Simple, simple things like filter changes, we, we need to, we need to be able to say, check that box and say, we're going to do that.
Yes, we will be happy to do that and also update the board on the overall preventive maintenance plan.
Thank you.
I see two questions, Commissioner Council and then Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you. Ms. Heath, Ms. Eath, I would like to know the question, as of today, not in January, but as of today. Have your crew started changing the filters? We have two, we have, we have three, we have two types of, of boilers. We have some that are still operated by just a switch for a number of properties and we have some that are separated. So I'm asking you, in each unit on both sides, the way that it works. Are you all in the process of changing the filters out for this winter?
I will need to confirm with my staff and follow up with the Commissioners.
Have you put that, have you put that on the scope of work for them to do day-to-day, knowing that this was come? I've asked where we prepared, ready. That this type of stuff would come up as well as backups and refrigerators and stoves. It'll, it won't end until April, I mean, until April. It starts in November, it'll take it all the way through until April.
Correct.
And as of January. Could you find out for us? Could you find out before we end today?
I will check on that. And, and again, preventive maintenance, because the team is ramping up for a process that they had not been doing previous to this timeframe. In reference to preventive maintenance, but I'll check to see what has been completed, if anything, prior to January.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No problem. Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Strickland, we see you there, but we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Like I said, I'm in transit, on the train, but my comments were just about RSC. And I know that one of the Commissioners mentioned all these negative things, but we cannot. Uh, negatively talk about this vendor if they did what was asked of them by the agency or for the agencies. Uh, inadequate oversight. And I don't want that prejudice to just go and, and just some all fairness. I don't know. This vendor other than they're, they've done in, in this agency and in government agencies. So I don't know. I don't think that it's fair for us to talk negatively about them if we don't know, uh, what, you know, all the details that happened to it. And I know that Commissioner Slover and Commissioner, you should put something in the memo about this. Um, in the memo that goes. And I think that if we do fair oversight and proper oversight, then we can come back with some true. Past performance or some true issues that, uh, that I think have, but to, to, to talk negatively about it, award them a CBE. That, that meets their section three goals all the time and hire people from our community. I don't think it's the right thing to do. Uh, especially in this public forum, if it's not a hundred percent accurate or we don't have the complete picture. That's all I'm saying on that. But I do think that Commissioner Slover is onto something is that if there's a little bit more. Play to what we plan to do in terms of hold people, hold this vendor and all of them accountable that we. So we can understand what performance metrics they would be doing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. I totally agree. And I think we have to, we have to be careful with that. This is someone's business and reputation. And I think we need to be mindful of where we fell short on our responsibilities and not place that on the vendor. I see your hand, Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes, I, I plan to vote no, and I just want to say that I think the, the paragraph that was added. Is so vague that it doesn't add anything. I'm concerned that we're absolving ourselves and we're absolving the contractor. And I just think another three-year multimillion-dollar contract under these circumstances doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover. Did you have another comment or your hand was up?
I want to build on that same theme here. In the previous meeting, it was made, at least my, what I understood was. That DCHA was taking the responsibility for what was being put upon this vendor at the HUD. And so. I don't see that to Commissioner Hoffman's point in the, in, in the write-up that we asked for. So I, that, that's a, I think that's getting back to Commissioner Strickland's point, which is we don't want to. Say negative things about a vendor that it wasn't their responsibility. And so I, I think we do need to clean that up a little bit. Um, and you know, based on Ms. Eath's response to what DCHA is doing. On their side, I think maybe we need to expand this. Um, reporting mechanism, not just to this vendor, but to ourselves as well. Because it sounds like. We haven't even implemented filter changes on the HVAC systems that we're responsible for. So I think the whole HVAC thing needs a real laser eyeball on here. Again. It also adds to, you know, it decreases the life of systems. I mean, filter replacement is one of the most effective ways to. Extend the life of systems, which costs a lot of money and it's very easy and, and, and cheap to do. And it's just best business practices. And so maybe we can expand it to everything and take advantage of that opportunity. But I just wanted to add that about the vendor. I, I hear you, Commissioner Strickland. So thank you for putting that in there.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, we need to move forward.
I had a comment.
I apologize. For some reason, I can't see anyone over to the left. My apologies. Please, Commissioner Skinner.
Yeah, so I think for, for this and other contracts, clearly we have to have systems and processes in place to provide the. The adequate oversight, reporting and accountability. And I think for, for this in particular, since this is. Before us today, I think the commitment from the, the staff in terms of making those changes. On reporting and holding the, this vendor particularly accountable as well as, as Commissioner Slover just said. Holding the staff accountable to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do in terms of. Uh, monitoring, looking at these systems, changing the filters and so forth. I, I'm convinced that going forward, the, we will have the proper, uh, uh, systems of accountability. Uh, in place. And I think this is something that we need to go ahead and move forward with. Uh, we've also been told that, uh, you know, at any time we can terminate this contract. Uh, for, for lack of performance or for convenience of the agency. So I'm going to support it. I think this is the proper thing to do.
Right. Thank you. Hearing that. Can we move forward if there are no more questions or comments from the Commissioners to entertain a vote?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
We, we already had a motion.
Oh, we sure did. We just need to vote now. Alithia? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Present.
We're calling for the vote now, Commissioner Fisher.
I'm voting present.
I got you. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council.
With the contract, knowing that any given time we can terminate it, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman.
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker.
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover.
Uh, yes, with all the guardrails for them.
Thank you. Commissioner Bussie Reader.
Yes.
Thank you. You have nine yes, two no, one present vote. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. Let's move to the next resolution. And I honestly don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to sit up. I may have to turn this over to Commissioner Council. Let's move to the next.
Hopefully this can be, be quick. It's a very positive development. The resolution is for the board to approve. Um, for acceptance of fifty-five million dollars in new market tax credits to go through DCH. Um, to provide community projects that can benefit our residents. And that have already been vetted through a competitive application process. I think we have, you have two people to speak to that.
Yes, Director Donald, we have, this is John Stringfield. We have Dane Anderson from Kip School, one of our previous. Uh, new market tax credit allocations. And they just want to take a few moments to talk about the benefits. Uh, that their, the investment has made on not only Kip, but the surrounding community.
Right. And then Alithia, there are two other residents signed up. Or two other individuals.
Uh, thank you. You all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. My name is Dane Anderson. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Kip DC. I was asked today to come and talk with you all about the investment in two thousand and fifteen. From the new market tax credit program. Um, as many of you may know, Kip DC is a network of high-performing public charter schools. Uh, and we received a seven-point-seven million dollar allocation of new market tax credits from DCH in two thousand and fifteen. To complete financing for the renovation of the, what we call the Hamilton Campus, which houses the Kip DC College Prep High School, one of the highest performing open enrollment. Public high schools in the district. The new market tax credit financing created one-point-eight million dollars in subsidy for the project. And the subsidy helped make the Hamilton Campus a reality and allowed Kip DC to invest some of that avoided debt service into its college completion support team. Which we call Kip Forward. I'm going to take just a minute to talk about the project and then a little bit about the results. So the, the campus is located at fourteen oh one Brentwood Parkway Northeast in the emerging Florida Avenue Union Market Commercial Area adjacent to Gallaudet University. The site was awarded Kip DC by, by the District of Columbia. The project is located in a census tract that is considered highly distressed, which at the time had a poverty rate of thirty-two point nine percent. The project had a tremendous communities, had tremendous community support, as evidenced by eighteen letters of support we received. The result was a hundred and twenty-six thousand square foot building featuring five levels, as well as a new athletic field, a track and a recreation field that is used by the community and by the school. The building includes capacity for about a thousand seats with forty-two classrooms and science labs. Ten specialty classrooms, a gym, an auditorium, as well as a media center and community meeting space. In terms of job creation, one layer of community benefits is the impact of job, job creation for low-income residents stemming. Both from the construction project and from the permanent operations of the high school. During construction, the project created approximately four hundred construction jobs and met the district's requirement of thirty-five percent. CBE participation and first source requirements of fifty-one percent of new hires that were district residents. In total, Kip DC employs over a hundred full-time staff for the operations and support for the campus. Of which more than forty new FTE jobs were created due to the new market tax credit financing. Additionally, the project resulted in approximately fifteen new FTE jobs created by contractors. Providing building maintenance, custodial, security and food services for the project. Kip DC worked with DCH to ensure hiring opportunities. Were disseminated through information sessions and made available to local residents of public housing projects. And efforts were made to hire, uh, public housing residents for both construction and permanent job placements. All of Kip DC's FTE employees were paid salaries that exceed the living wage for the DC. All FTE employees also receive health, dental, life, vision and short-term and long-term disability, as well as four or three B benefits. Uh, more, and then more than fifty percent of Kip DC's employees are residents of the, the district. There's obviously educational benefit here, which is the second layer of the community impact. The primary focus of Kip DC. Is to create high-quality educational opportunities for youth of the district's underserved communities. Like Kip College Prep is one of the district's highest performing open enrollment public schools boasts more than a ninety-five percent college acceptance rate. And Kip DC alumni graduate from college at nearly four times the rate of the peers in DC. I've talked about a lot of the benefits here, but just to name a few more. Uh, the Hamilton Campus created seats for four hundred and seventy-five existing students and capacity for an additional five hundred. New students. At the time in the financing, seventy-eight percent of the students in the, uh, in the cluster twenty-three where the campus is located live in households eligible for free or reduced price meals. While the majority of students come from wards seven and eight, this high school is fed from all five of Kip DC's middle schools, which are in turn fed by early childhood and elementary schools. Resulting in additional space that enables students from all eight wards to get to and through college. Finally, the DPR fields adjacent to the site are available for community recreation use when not in use by Kip DC's PE classes and sports teams. That, uh, this is also utilized by sports teams every weeknight and all day on the weekends. Happy to answer any questions, but Kip DC is very appreciative of this program and the partnership with DCH.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more, any more testimony, public testimony, Alithia?
Yes, there is. Uh, we have Ms. Patricia Bishop again, who also signed up to speak on this resolution. Ms. Bishop, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I just was interested in receiving more information about that Kent DC in the program. That's the neighborhood I came from. I went to Hamilton as a junior high school before it turned into Kemp. So any information that I could receive. And follow-ups with that, I would very much like to be involved with that as a member of the Citywide Advisory Board. Maybe some public housing or section eight tenants' children are in there. So I like to have that information and be able to reach out and give those. People that information as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, next we have a, a non-resident, Mr. William Jordan. It's Mr. Jordan here to speak on Resolution twenty-two forty-two.
Yes, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. You have three minutes.
Okay. Um, good afternoon. My name is William Jordan. I am. A member of the Park Morton Equity Team, uh, put together by Ms. Hi, the, um, Resident Council President. I wanted to raise some issues and concerns with this particular bill, but with DCH and new market tax credits in general. So my first concern is. The projects that you funded in the past and are proposing primarily charter schools and nonprofit organizations. Particularly charter schools, which have other sources of funding and opportunities. Is a misuse or a poor use of new market tax credits. Having worked on a Park Morton Equity Plan, our goal was to ensure that the household income of each family in Park Morton. Increased. And our goal was to leverage every tool and opportunity to make that to happen. Uh, funding nonprofits and charter schools sure provide services, but it's not the bang for the buck that we need. We need these investments to translate directly into the families that live in public housing or involved in these projects. Um, an example of this during COVID nineteen, one of the things we learned is that the IT infrastructure of. Public housing and people who have vouchers and et cetera, in order to do remote work, education was poor. We should be investing in jobs and companies that can make a difference in this kind of way. Um, the other thing that concerns me. Um, the other thing that concerns me is I'm not clear how residents and their concerns were incorporated into this decision-making. Um, D C H E Board has been a mystery up until a month ago, um, and there's no accountability and I think that this board needs to put some attachments or something in this resolution and put some standards that we want these investments to move the social economic condition of the families and public housing and under the responsibility of this agency directly, either through their businesses, through their employment and stop this general stuff. Um, the person from Kip did a good job, but he did not excel me exactly how many public housing residents benefited from each of those pots. And that's what I care about, I think that's the purpose of the Equity Plan and I think that's the responsibility of this board and even down to the D C H E Board, so pass it, but you have to put some strings on this and you have to change the focus and get residents involved because this is an economic engine and that's what we need. So we don't need to continue to give the people who are fat more. Um, and that's what this is, it's some, it's not getting the best bang for the buck and it's not touching the right people in the right way. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Madam Chair, if I can just respond quickly to Mr. Jordan. Um, there are additional funds available, uh, Mr. Jordan, even as part of this allocation. Um, and there, we will also hopefully be making application for new market tax credit, um, for next year. So if you or others have, um, programs and organizations that you believe will be eligible, I'll be happy to have staff reach out to you and talk about the process and what's required and, um, walk you through all of that and if you will want to put together a coalition or partner with others to go after the funds, um, for different, those purposes that you mentioned. If you meet the requirements, then you will be considered. But we'll, I'll have staff to reach out and to follow up and, and lay out the whole process.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you and I take you up on that challenge, but I do think institutionally, if we're in a IT, artificial intelligence world, that the agency as its goal needs to make that the goal, if you understand what I mean.
There are other dollars available for that as well.
No, well, and I, and I will say, you know, there were a hundred and thirty-three families in Park Morton at the time of the start of this project and our goal was to raise the household income for each family on average fifty thousand dollars. That was the goal in the Park Morton Equity Plan, right? So other funds, as long as it can translate into for our specific goal was fifty thousand for each family, great. But additional funds does not equal fifty thousand increase, I don't think, and, and that's my point, so hopefully.
We'll, we'll follow up, I thought you were talking about providing technology and wifi and that, and that said, there are funds for that, but we'll follow up with you.
That's true, but that will come from, a company will be, there's companies who are invested in, who work in that field, right? So basically, we're invested in companies and those companies deliver products and services and if those, and what we're trying to do is align those in a way so that jobs go to residents or opportunities go directly to residents as an end result of this kind of investment. So again, I take you up on your.
Okay. John and Colin, would follow up, Mr. Jordan, with the, regarding the process for the, and criteria for the remaining funds?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I think that, that's all of the public witnesses, so if you want to entertain a motion?
Yes, I do.
Resolution.
Thank you, um, I will entertain a motion from the commission.
There is a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, we just need to, we just need to move forward with the, uh, vote, we did have a motion, it's, we didn't do a motion for this.
Motion?
No.
We didn't do a motion, no we didn't, we never did a motion.
There, there's a motion though, motion?
Okay, I need a second.
A second.
All right, we have open for discussion. Commissioner Slover?
Uh, appreciate the opportunity, um, first of all, uh, I was, congratulations for getting, uh, another allocation of new market tax credits, um. I did want to sort of expand on some stuff I talked about earlier in our previous meeting about sort of just, you know, D C H E is not had a lot to, hasn't had a lot of functionality in the last year or so, just because there hasn't been a lot of stuff for them to do. I think we should take this opportunity to sort of double down on, um, on the work that we did about five or six years ago to sort of separate out D C H E, create its own board, bring in an independent board member, sort of really create that delineation between D C H E and D C H A, uh, which was done really, for the most part, to be able to attract the new market tax credits that we're now, uh, getting. And so what I'd like to do is just sort of get a commitment, um, from whomever, I mean, Mr. Stringfield or the other board members of D C H E, that we will sort of fill out that board as soon as possible. Uh, again, one of those seats has been vacant for, I think, five, at least five years. Um, the other seat's been vacant for quite some time, those are both D C H A board members, so they should be relatively easy to fill. Um, and so I think we do need to do that and then also, given how many new people are on the board and it's been probably been a long time since we've defined the relationship between D C H E and D C H A, sort of what is and what, what does and does not happen, uh, to sort of further accentuate that, uh, the delineation between the two entities, I think would be helpful, uh, as part of this process. So maybe we can get a commitment to do that, but certainly I think we have to accept fifty-five million dollars, uh, so, uh, hopefully we get that as part of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Slover, um, I see Commissioner Parker and then Commissioner Council.
Can I speak?
Please do.
Okay, um, I, I look forward to having our, um, city get these dollars. I am going to vote yes on, on receiving them, um, like, um, Commissioner, uh, Slover, I am concerned a little bit about whether we are properly prepared with the D C H E Board to actually manage these funds, administrate them and have transparency, uh, enough transparency to the D C H A that we know where the funds are being spent and properly spent. I know there's a lot of autonomy for the D C H E, to, D C H E to manage and administrate these funds and that once we authorize this allocation, it basically goes into their hands. Uh, but I would like to know that the, uh, board is properly, uh, constituted to, uh, handle these funds and has good people on it and I thought that we were going to make those, uh, appointments at the annual meeting, which was scheduled for ten o'clock today, but was then suddenly canceled. So, uh, now we don't know who will be on that board, uh, but we are making a decision to accept the allocation. But I, I hope that this money will move us forward and will allow us to build some wonderful projects and to help our communities, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Council, did you have your hand up?
I did, I echo what, uh, Commissioner Parker just said, thank you.
Thank you, if there are any, if there are no more comments, we can move forward with the vote.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Harris?
I will, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Fauchekio? Commissioner Fauchekio, are you there? I'll circle back, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland? Commissioner Strickland, are you still with us?
He was actually approaching his destination, he was, he was texting me to say he's voting yes, he needed to vote, so I don't know if that's acceptable, but he was approaching his destination, I'm sorry.
Um, I'll try to circle back, I'm still going through, so I'll circle back to him, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Slover?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackson?
Yes, and Lawan's vote is in the chat.
Okay.
And.
That acceptable, Madam General Counsel?
No, we need to actually hear his vote.
Okay, I'll circle back, uh, Commissioner Fauchekio, because I can hear from him.
Yes, oh, yes, sorry. I'm going yes too.
Okay, and I hear Commissioner, uh, Lawan's, his vote is yes as well, and now Madam Chair, Bussy Reader.
Oh. I'm sorry, it's Fauchekio, did you get me too? I think Strick, okay.
Yes.
Strickland tried to impersonate me.
I have you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you have twelve yes, the resolution.
Wow, can we?
What, what, I mean, what a wonderful holiday gift, we all voted yes.
I think this may be a first for me.
I can change my vote, I can change my vote.
No, 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 we gonna take it, we gonna take it. I'mma have to jump off, thank you so very much, Commissioner Council, can you take it from here?
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us why the annual meeting was canceled?
Yes, I sent out the email, uh, after we, you guys didn't get my email?
No.
I'm sorry, I did send it, I, I thought it went out, my apologies. I had it crafted, I'll see if it's in my outbox, I was having email trouble here, I was locked out of my, of the email. Um, I decided that I think we need to postpone the annual meeting until after, with so much going back and forth with this potential new legislation, it didn't make sense for us to have an annual meeting and then this legislation potentially pass and then we have to change everything that we put forth, so I wanted us to wait till afterwards, so I postponed it until January. That's the reason why, and I'm sorry, you guys, I have a horrible strain of this flu, I gotta get off this call. I gotta lay down, I feel horrible, so I can talk to you more about this later and I'll follow up with my email. Alithia, because we, I can go back and check and see if the email is in the outbox, but I was locked out of the system.
Don't worry about it, feel better.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, you ready for me to start with our testimony list?
Yes, ma'am, if you will.
Okay, thank you, um, as a reminder, we have a very lengthy list. Uh, our residents will have five minutes to speak, our non-residents will have three minutes. Uh, first on the list of residents is Natasha Whittier. Natasha Whittier? Okay, I'm gonna keep moving, Linda Thompson, Ms. Linda Thompson. And also, if you are dialing in, uh, uh, star six nine will unmute you. I'll keep going, uh, Deondra Johnson. Okay. Amanda Davis, Amanda Davis.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Ms. Davis, you have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, um, good afternoon, I was just following up, um, I believe in November I spoke with the board and I, um, read a statement regarding my issues. Um, I, due to family illness, I was not able to submit the emails that, um, some of the commissioners requested and I will be sending that to you guys, um, this week. But I'm following up with you guys because they're still like, um, there's a lack of transparency again with the housing specialists and just things that don't make sense, um. I submitted recertification papers in April, I didn't hear back until November. The information that she quoted didn't make sense and I'm, it's still a back and forth and I don't understand, um, how she's come up with the information, with the, the, I gather, the payment she's expecting me to pay, provided the information she was, she was submitted. Um, again, this is something, I don't feel like I want to go into all the specifics, I'll submit it to the emails that were provided to me last time. But again, I just asked the board that you guys sit down, I understand you have a lot going on with the housing, but there needs to be some type of review of how the HCV program is being handled, because it seems like the specialists are just doing things at their women leisure and the only person that there is for accountability is the ombudsman, but I don't feel like I should have to go to him every time something is wrong, because on my end, I feel like I'm nagging. I don't feel like there should be this much issues, because if this was any other type of agency or business, they would close the business or the people would be let go. I don't understand the process that has to occur for people in the housing department to either be written up or removed from their duties, but after receiving the emails that I will submit, I ask that you guys definitely review what is going on it, with this program and then come up with some type of, um, outline on how you guys are gonna fix this, because it's not fair to the landlords that participate with the program and it's not fair to the voucher holders either. We are the ones that are getting messed over left and right and I shouldn't have to take our time from work to sit in this meeting and nag you guys when these people are being hired to do a job, um. Also, I don't know if this is where I would speak regarding what is being put out on this board supposed to be, um, dismembered and then put another commission set forth. I just hope if there's anybody from the mayor's office, as a resident and a taxpaying citizen, I think we need to keep the current board of commissioners, allow them to work out whatever issues they have, but anything that is coming from the mayor's office will seem like the people, the recipients of the HCV and the housing tenants will be further removed from the process and it will be more controlled by what the mayor wants, um, that is it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, uh, next on the list we have is La Monica Walton. La Monica Walton? Okay, I'll continue, Jamila Kavanaugh? Jamila Kavanaugh? Okay, Nina Smith? Nina Smith?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, yes, we hear you, you have five minutes, thank you.
Okay, hi to everyone. I have three topics that I would like to talk about. The first one is in-person inspections. I need the agencies to start having their inspection departments start coming in to inspect some of these units visually and that through, virtually through the lens of our cell phones. And the reason why I'm saying that is because these private-owned landlords are able to get away with a lot of stuff versus you all coming into the units and coming into the buildings to see, um, the different structures and the different issues and stuff that we're facing. My second issue is private-owned landlords. Some of these private-owned landlords are getting away with murder. The standard that you all set for them, I feel like you all need to set an even higher standard because when we need things done in our unit or replaced, we get lies and stories or stories and lies and then remind you, our annual inspections are only once a year. So they're able to get away, let's say with eleven months of not fixing or replacing things. So that's why I feel like we need to go back to in-person inspections, so we can start holding these private-owned. So that's why I feel like we need to go back to in-person inspections, so we can start holding these private-owned landlords accountable. All of them are not bad, but there's a big handful of them that's out there. And my third issue is, I'm a voucher holder, and I've been looking for housing for two years. The unit I live in, I've been living in there for three, so of course, I have to stay there for a year, and then after my twelve months, it becomes month to month. The issue that I'm having, and I'm quite sure there's other voucher holders that's having the same issues, issues are, the cost of living has went up seven point one percent as of November of twenty twenty-two. The starting price for a three-bedroom, which that's what I have, is at least four thousand dollars. So for two years, I've been looking for a decent unit, not just any kind of unit, but a decent unit in a decent area where I feel comfortable with me and my family laying our heads. But unfortunately, because of inflation, the cost of gas and food, I'm stuck living in a building that I don't even feel safe in, but unfortunately, I'm not able to move, because I need you all to look at the cost of living in the District of Columbia and the approved rent rates that y'all have on the website. They need to go up. I work, I pay my rent, but unfortunately, I'm not able to move because my, I, what these landlords are asking, and what they're asking is market rent. So either they say we don't accept the voucher, or this is what we, we accept the voucher, but this is what we expect for you all to pay. And so these vouchers are not covering, um, what these new landlords, what these new developers and these new properties are asking for. So I really need the agency to support us voucher holders, and I feel like we're being discriminated against silently and legally. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Uh, next is Serenity Roberts. Serenity Roberts. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Raniise Miles. Ms. Miles.
I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. You have five minutes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So, um, I'm having an issue at my, where I stay now at Metro Towns. Um, my property manager is Ms. Boye. Um, on October twenty-seventh, I had, um, a letter given to me about a mandatory transfer moving into seven-seven Water Lily Lane. Um, it's still around here in Metro Towns, and it was, the transfer was because of serious conditions, like in my home that posed to like a life-threatening to my life, health, and safety. Um, now they're saying that they're trying to move me to another property, um, and that's Langston Terrace, and I honestly don't feel safe with going over there. I, I honestly do not want to move there. I'm not interested in moving in to Langston Terrace. I signed a document on November first to move into the unit that was promised to me by my property manager and D.C. Housing Authority lawyers. Um, so I would like to move into the Water Lily Lane unit that I was promised and accepted on November first. I have documentation. Um, I just, I just feel safe here, being in the community that I live in now. Um, just having a relationship with like all my neighbors, and since the passing of my mother, I'm able to be close to my family that's also living in the same neighborhood as well, which is Metro Towns. Um, it's been depressing for me, overwhelming. I'm a young young lady, twenty-five years old, just trying to make a way for myself, and they're trying to move me out of my, my neighborhood. And I'm not trying to do that. Um, they claimed that they didn't know about the mode in my unit. Um, they didn't know about anything that happened in my unit, but on the letter, it say that they did. So I'm not understanding why I can't wait until the unit, you know, is finished for repairs. Um, they saying I have to move immediately, so it's urgent, um, and I have only five days to accept the unit at Langston Terrace, and I'm not trying to go there. Um, I can put on my video. I could show you the unit if you want to see it. Um, the ceiling is messed up, it's mold and stuff in the cabinets, and I sent the picture to my landlord thinking that it was gonna speed up the process for me to move into the unit across the street from me, but I guess it didn't. It basically made it a big issue. I even have lawyers representing me right now from Bread of the City, and they're just giving my lawyers the runaround. Um, I had the letter right here that they gave me. And I, I don't know. I just need y'all help.
Ms. Miles, I'm, I'm sorry to hear of your misfortune, especially being uh, around the holiday and condolences of you losing your mother. Um, Director Donald, for it to be so easy for her to move across the street, can we look into this and clear this matter up ASAP?
Yes, I just sent a text because I wasn't sure, um, since it's Metro Towns, but I understand, yes, we are responsible for that, so Ms. Eth will have an immediate follow-up.
Okay. Ms. Miles, um, please reach out. Please reach out to us. It's a week. Christmas will be here soon, but please reach out to us to make sure that we're going to give you a safe and sanitary environment, okay? Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miles. Um, next is Edward Harris. Edward Harris. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, next is Ms. Rosa Burbridge. Ms. Burbridge?
Hello, I'm here. Hello, everyone. Um, today I'm speaking in the capacity of the Dooley Sword President of the D.C. Citywide Advisory Board. According to HUD, section five-eleven, which is a congressional act, so I'm speaking as my position. Um, first, I would like to thank Director Donald for meeting with the Citywide Advisory Board. We do appreciate it, and I also thank her for meeting with me one-on-one leader to leader. We discussed a lot of things. We want to move expeditiously, yet with integrity, ethically, with morals, and within the boundaries of the law. We talked about solution. We talked about task forces moving forward in accountability. Um, the board has power, and I'm activating that power, and I'm going to use the power for the good of the residents of D.C.H.A. I will be reaching out to you, Chief Mopin. I have, um, reached out with, go ahead, Ms. Miles, you were saying something?
Hey.
You got all your points across? Say what you needed to say.
You can answer, Ms. Burbridge.
Okay, um, I'm going to be reaching out to Chief, Chief Mopin about different things and about different members of the board. Um, I, from what Director Donald tell me, she does have a plan that she plans to enforce. Um, we're gonna hold her accountable, and we're gonna move forward for the residents of, of the District of Columbus housing program. Um, I feel a little saddened, because as president, I have not been invited to the table with different issues. I'm not aware of a solution until it's forty-eight hours prior. That's not enough time to give an intellectual experience, uh, knowledgeable comment. Um, I know you guys are kind of worried about what's coming up, but if we are all doing, have done, and continue, continue to do the right thing, there shouldn't be any worry. I'm gonna reach out to the leaders, um, have meetings, and like when we hear these testimonies, my number one intent is to intercept, to get something done, so we can have more positive-focused testimonials about what was done right, and not just what's been done wrong, because they are formed from everything, and we're gonna make a forum for the residents to meet. This five minutes is not enough time. It's like you're putting the residents on the back burner. So we're gonna create a forum where there will be time. I'm trying to stay focused. I'm taking Director Donald at her word, but I will be holding her accountable. We agreed that we will not agree on everything, but the one thing we do both stand in complete partnership with is that the residents of D.C.H.A. is and will always be our first priority. So I want to thank you, and moving forward, let's do what we need to do to make everyone lifestyle a little bit better, including, almost forget, training people with transferable skills, not just giving them a job at McDonald's, not just sending them to the construction site. That's well and good, but training them with transferable skills, training the management, and all, everyone across the board how to understand, have sensitively trained, and realize that you're more than just a job. You are a person that the residents are gonna bring your problems to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burbridge. Uh, next we have Ms. Paulette Matthews. Ms. Matthews, are you there? If you need to unmute your phone, it's, um, star six nine, unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you hold on just one second? I'm at work, please. Um, seven forty-one, all right? Okay, um, yes, how y'all doing, everybody? Happy holidays. Uh, let's talk about a couple of things. I want to talk about topics right now for Berry Farms, until I get this covered the other way. So can I get that, and then I'll address the other issues? Can you work with me? D.C.H.A. Y'all can't hear me, correct?
We hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was asking that y'all give an update at this present time while I deal with this customer, and once I get the update of Berry Farms, then I will be able to proceed with the rest of the issues. Can y'all help me out here for a minute? I guess not.
I don't like to discuss. Let me, let me check, Ms. Matthews, if, uh, Mr. Stringfield, or, or if, um, LeSean Douglas is on, um, to say when the next resident, um, Berry Farm meeting is, or if there are any updates since the last meeting. I'm not sure if they're still on, but if, I'm calling them up for you. But you can go to your next one while we're, while they're.
Okay, um, they're gone now at the present time, so I'mma go ahead and move forward. Um, my concern is about Berry Farms' update, and yes, they did have a meeting. Um, it's been maybe two months ago now. I don't know, time moves so fast, but it was held at the Recreation Center. It was held in the gym. It was actually cold in there, um, and they needed to have a, a microphone. Uh, one more time, the meeting is scheduled. There was POA, and there were some D.C.H.A. representatives there, but as always, no questions that needed to be asked could be asked. It's always like the, the piece of the puzzle is never in the rooms, or never a phone call away, so that the residents who have been asking questions since before, while we were there, um, in the midst of our, um, you know, relocation, and since we've been scattered all over the District of Columbia. Um, and I don't think all, uh, people are aware of the time and the date, so I don't know how y'all go about communicating with all the residents, and maybe some have made their mind up not to come back, and maybe that's why I don't see them in the rooms, but that's just a concern of mine. Um, being as though I'm in Lejoy Park now, and the worst thing I could have done was move where there's a dumpster. First of all, I guess the trash company, you know, once they pu, pick up the trash, and no matter how it falls, or if the trash bags hang from the outside can, they're not to get out to get it. What I don't understand is why there's not a staff available when they come through, and maybe it's because of a timing issue, and they don't know the time. But the problem I'm having is that that's a twenty-four-hour restaurant, and I'm having rats to invade in my home, um, and my dogs are bringing that to my attention. I just recently, I had a walk-through some time ago with Ms. High Tower there, and I pointed out some things, and these things have been corrected to eliminate the rotten issue, but they can't seem to maintain the trash outside of the illegal dumping, and I was informed at the last meeting that Ms. Rochelle gave since her arrival, um, that that dumpster had not always been there. I've been asking ever since I've been there if it could be moved. I don't know from where it came, but it had not always been at that spot, and I have been asking that it be moved if they cannot maintain it, and they haven't been doing a good job of doing it. Um, trash is always either on the ground. I'm always picking up trash in my yard. I do have a gate now, so therefore, all of it doesn't get in there like it used to be, but there's a serious rotten issue, and, um, that is my biggest concern, and what are they gonna do about that? And that was a question that I asked at the meeting that I was in. Then there's another issue, and I've been talking about this ever since I've been, excuse me, dealing with the Housing Authority and parking. Um, you can give parking tickets out to the healthcare aides. You can give parking tickets out to the contractors. Um, you can get a sticker if you own a car, but yet, if you have a person that's coming to visit you, they could subject it to be either get a ticket, or the, uh, visit will be uncomfortable because we're looking outdoors and windows to see whether or not the D.C. Housing Authority or somebody's gonna come and ticket the area, because you don't have that, that parking pad. You might spend the night or something. So that's always been my concern, and I don't know what they can do about it, but I think that they should be able to do something about it, because the residents, visitors should be able to park without the fear of getting ticketed or towed or something of those, those natures. And so, um, I just don't know what's gonna take place, and at the same time, I had some issues with Ms. High Tower was there, and unfortunately, I'm just finding out here recently, and it was supposed to have been sent to risk management, and I don't know what the proper procedures are, and I can't seem to get anybody to, um, let me know, and, um, I guess if there's anybody in risk management sitting in the rows that y'all could tell me what the procedures are, because first of all, I put the information in in two thousand and twenty, and we were in a height of COVID, and people hardly working at work, uh, working from home, whatever the case may be, drop balls, whatever, but at the end of the day, there was a ball dropped, and that was for my property. It was destroyed, and so now, I had to resubmit it since Ms. Rochelle has been there, and I don't know what's gonna go from this point and how it works, because here we are in two thousand and twenty-two, when I put it in in two thousand, and we get ready to run into two thousand and twenty-three, and I don't know if anything's gonna happen until two thousand and twenty-four without someone letting me know what's gonna take place and what's the next steps. I've been told somebody's gonna call me, but when? In thirty days? Two weeks? When? So I have a lot of concerns, and I just can't get no answers, and I didn't start off the meeting with you guys, so I don't know if the police did, oh, O.P.S. did a report, because I know that I had inquired about them doing it monthly, and I would just like to check to see, they don't have to repeat it, uh, whether that, that took place, or that was just a one-time thing. And anybody can answer.
Chief Mopin, do you have an answer for?
Yeah, good, good afternoon, Ms. Matthews. I don't think the report was included today. I do have a report prepared. I could send to you if you, uh, if you want.
Just send me your address. I just feel as though all, everywhere, you know what's going on, and there should be a monthly report that's um, O.P.S. so there, everybody could be at a gunshot, uh, hit and runs, whatever the case may be. Um, not just, you know, the, the, the area, the whole area, but D.C. Housing Authority property. So maybe we can resolve some of these issues, or, you know, things like that. So again, I've been asking that for a long time, too, and I did hear y'all say it last month, but I thought that was something that, um, Ms. Reader was going, you know, and put in place for, for forever, for as long as y'all do these boards. For, for, forever, for, as long as y'all do these board meetings.
You're right, Ms. Matthews, that's, that's, that's only in my team. We, we were, we did not include the public safety update in my report, so I will, um, get that from the chief and, and send it around to everybody. Um, excuse me, you had a number of questions. I'll have Ms. follow up in terms of the parking. I'm not sure what the parking procedures are there. And, um, the, um, risk management issue. Does General Counsel have a response or when we can get back? Excuse me, I have to get off for a second, I'm choking up, sorry.
Yes, Director, this is Lori Bonds. We'll be able to follow up before the end of the week, Ms. Matthews.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. And also, I would like to know, um, even you, Ms. Donald, what was, uh, be straight. Over three years now, my, my neighbors have had issues with their floors. Well, I, I, I figured once I got into my, actually walked into my house, cause when I went through with Ms. Hunter, I didn't realize that there was like a weak spot in the floor. I guess I did walk that spot that particular day. But then when I actually moved in, I did, so I already knew that there was a cover-up. I don't have a problem as worse as my neighbors on the office, opposite side of me, but I know that they've been having these issues for like three years or more. I'm concerned about them and their well-being and I don't understand, oh, why it's, it's wrong. Working inside. The D C Housing Authority is aware of it and it shouldn't take three years or more for the stuff to take place. And I think y'all around about doing a little something, something here this week, but it took that long and things are getting worse. And I think that there needs to be a meeting with y'all at Lejoy Park, um, and Calamella, where everybody is in the room and questions will be answered and people's concerns can be spoke of and y'all can give out like some dates and times when this work is gonna be done in three and two years. Shouldn't have never taken that long. Or either coming in and doing a, a half-whatever job, um, and then turn around and you're back at square one again when you knew from the beginning or you have seen what's going on, especially if you're doing inspections. So, I got a rotten issue, I got a lot of issues and I don't know who's gonna address what and how it's gonna be fixed, but that dumpster is definitely a problem for me.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Matthews. Uh, next on-
Hello, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, before y'all cut me off, I didn't hear. I guess they cut me off.
Definitely follow up with you regarding your issues.
Uh, okay, this week or next week?
Ms. Matthews, somebody will be out to your unit no later than Tuesday of next week.
Okay, well, I, I, like I just said, I have a job, so y'all need to call me. I hear what you're saying out your mouth, Ms. Eve, at the present time, but I've been trying to get somebody out of my house for a minute, but, okay. I guess I'll talk with you, Ms. Eve, in reference to that and see what I can schedule for y'all next Tuesday. Okay, cause I, I, Friday is a better day for me. I'm now trying to work so I can stay focused and during these times, I get to thinking about my son, so I'm right here helping out the front and I'm off on Tuesdays. Monday, Friday, not Tuesday. Fridays, not Tuesday.
That's been noted and my maintenance team will contact you about schedule.
All right, thank you, Ms. Eve, and you enjoy the rest of your day. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, next is Ms. Shante High, Ms. High.
Hi, thank you. One second, let me, I'm, I'm working from my phone today, sorry. Um, John fifteen eighteen, if you, if, he, if the world hates you, know that it has hated me before it hated you. Good day to the B O C, I testify today. Uh, sorry. My camera wouldn't cut on, I'm sorry about that. Um, I testify before you today that D C H A has hindered the progress of the residents and of the people for far too long. Why is there so much money being exchanged within D C H A with none of it going to help residents other than to help them move? Moving doesn't count as move, moving doesn't just count as moving from one place to another. To me, moving means growth in all aspects of that person or family's lives. D C H A seeks to just shuffle people around and even put the, push them so hard that they lose hope. I don't understand why D C H A wants to break people who are, who are and have already been traumatized. If this B O C needs to be restructured, get rid of everyone except Kenneth Council, Denise Blackson, Janet Parker, Ann Hoffman and Bill Slover, because these are the commissioners that actually care, that actually give a good old-fashioned hoop and that actually want to see this agency become better. However, because of the personal stance from some commissioners on this board as well as Director Donald whining to the mayor about not having her way and feeling attacked because of her lack of professionalism, experience and clarity on how to handle this agency, the residents may lose what voices that they have, that we have on this Board of Commissioners, which is unnecessary and unfair. Lastly, I have finally applied, been approved for and secured a new home in Ward One. I'm now hopeful that my family will excel in all areas of life now that I don't have to deal, uh, deal with the continued stress of D C H A. My next step is to purchase a home to be completely done with y'all because unless this agency turns around to put the people first, it will crash and burn in the worst way. So, from here on out, keep my name out of your mouths unless you're discussing business that will equate to income for my family. Collisions, chapter four, verse six. Let your speech always be gracious, seasoned with salt, so that you may know how you ought to answer each person. I am Ms. Shante High, President of the Council at Park Morton. I thank you. Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays, seasons tidings and all that tra-la-la goodness and happiness to everybody and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. High. Uh, next on the list is Tavon Tate. Tavon Tate? Okay, I'll move on. Uh, next is Ms. Patricia Malloy. Ms. Malloy, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'd like to echo what Ms. High just said. This is a thirteen-member board. After, um, resolutions are agreed upon, I have noticed that the majority of the appointees log off from the meeting rather than hear the concerns and complaints. My name is Patricia Malloy. I'm a former Lincoln Heights resident as a chair. Now, I live in one of the offsite. I'm speaking on behalf of Lincoln Heights. Lincoln Heights have no representation. I do not wanna hear from anyone saying that they do. At the Demar meeting in November, uh, Mrs. Stringfeller and Andre Gore did a PowerPoint, um, in regards to tax credit, saying that a hundred and sixty units will be built in the Deanwood area with sixty to eighty units being replacement units for Lincoln Heights. I have two questions in regards to that, you know, I would like them answered before we get off. Where would these units be built? And what are the bedroom sizes? I, I am an A N C Commissioner and I know it's supposed to be the Deanwood Station. But when were you gonna tell the residents and when were you gonna tell management? And really, will sixty to eighty units be given to Lincoln Heights? Also, Commissioner Council, uh, spoke on units being taken, being put back online after they were taken off. I would like Ms. Eve to know and I have proof, I have documentation. Um, in twenty twenty-one, nineteen apartment buildings in Lincoln Heights are slated to be taken down from three hundred fiftyth Street to three hundred, to three twenty-fiftieth Street Northeast. Recently, three hundred fiftyth Street was mistakenly renovated with new floors, cabinets and everything. Now, they don't know what to do. Not only that, we still have families that are in apartment buildings, one and two families. And I'm gonna give you three addresses. Three oh nine fiftyth Street, five twenty-five fiftieth Place, five twenty-seven fiftieth Place. One family. All these families are on the third floor. Do anybody care? I don't know. Also, this mo- this morning, I was listening to the brown bag. The Strand Theater. If I would, I live in the Strand residency because D C H A sent money last year, well, D C H E, sent, they took the tax credit money from the Strand Theater and sent it to L A to build a hospital. I really don't believe the developer wants D C H A's money. D C H E took jobs from the residents of Lincoln Heights and Richardson dwellings because we didn't have, you all took the tax credit money. So, our residents were not able to get jobs in the, uh, the, uh, Deanwood Smokehouse. That's what it's going to be. No one has come before our A N C to tell us about these hundred and sixty units. No one has come to our A N C. When we asked about the funding for the Strand Theater, for the Smokehouse, Tim White, Jim Pad, they always shove it underneath the rug. It's not fair. It's not right. Commissioner Slover, Commissioner Hoffman, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Parker, Commissioner Blackson, I take my hat off to you because somewhere down the line, we all will meet up again. I'm not going anywhere. I'm always gonna be an advocate for the residents of Lincoln Heights. I'm always, because D C H A do not care. Lincoln Heights property, their security, cleanliness, they can't get materials, they can't get supplies. And yes, I'm the one that sent the email to Silverman because his staff was telling the residents, there is no money to purchase supplies. I know for a fact, I've been told that. So, Ms. Eve, for you to say some, some things are not true, I have proof, I have emails, I have documents. John Stringfeller know I have documents. Andre Gore know I have document. Jim Pad know I have document. I'm the chair of the New Community Initiative. I started this mess and that's what it is, a mess. D C H A have lied. I have pages and pages of stuff that D C H A have violated under the New Community Initiative. I could be a jackass and take everything, all the information I have. Any commissioner that wants to know what I'm talking about with these nineteen units, nineteen apartment buildings, I can send you the email. And by the way, I've noticed D C H A has dismantled the Board of Commissioners' emails because they, everything I sent to you all are coming back. You all's email has been dismantled. Could I please get your email, Mr. Slover, Mr. Council, Ms. Hoffman? I can send you my proof from D C H A. Thank you. And I need those two questions answered, please. I have two questions I would like for them to be answered.
Is anyone from O C P on about these nineteen units?
Um, uh, first of all, I asked about the hundred and sixty units that's gonna be built in the Deanwood area.
Yes, ma'am.
And you all's PowerPoint that you did not present today, you presented at the Demar meeting. There are sixty to eighty units that's gonna be replacement units for Lincoln Heights only. Go back and look at your PowerPoint because you pre- you presented it at the Demar meeting. And then with these nineteen apartment buildings that's slated to be taken down, you all put all this money in one of them to reopen, which is three hundred fiftyth Street. Please tell me why. Please tell me why there's one and two families stealing these buildings by themselves with no security, no locks on the doors? And I don't want no one from that, from housing telling me there's locks on Lincoln Heights doors. Cause you'll be lying. You can walk in Lincoln Heights, open the door or either just walk in. So, you'll be lying if you tell me there's locks on the doors. You'll be lying if you tell me there's one fam- not one. It bothers me when you have families on third floor and they're the only ones in the building? No.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Ms. Eve, do you have any inform- I don't have the information on the replacement units. Uh, Ms. Malloy, I wasn't at the Dev Mod and, um, I think the O C P team is meeting on, with the Strand Theater. I do wanna go to that one.
For the Demar meeting, you were in the meeting, uh, Director Donald. The meeting was last month when Stringfeller and Andre did the PowerPoint for the tax credit. When they, but you all did present the PowerPoint today, but you presented it in the Demar meeting.
I'll, I'll go back and look, I wasn't in, at the Dev Mod meeting this, this month, ma'am, but the Strand Theater, the ten million dollars is still reserved for the Strand Theater. They're meeting with them right now, I believe.
I don't think they're gonna take it because they feel that you all don't carry out your promises, but I'm gonna let them tell you all that.
Okay, they're meeting with them. I just wanted to say that that money was held in reserve. I don't, I wasn't here when that whole deal didn't come to fruition, but that meeting, I mean, the money is in reserve for a period of time based on their, their ability to meet the requirements. And so, they're meeting right now about that. I will have to follow up unless there's someone else from my team who's here. We can talk about the sixty to eighty replacement units and the nineteen apartment buildings. I'm, I'm really sorry that I'm, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, Ms. Malloy. I'm not trying to be flip, I really don't, so I can't answer your questions, but I will follow up if I don't have staff on hand to answer.
Director, um, I can respond to the, there was a demolition application for, um, can confirm the number of units at Lincoln Heights. It was quite some time ago, so those might be the units that, um, Ms. Malloy is referring to in terms of demolition.
I will guess is the specific.
If that's possible.
I'll get the buildings that have been approved, units and buildings that have been approved for, by HUD in reference to, uh, demolition, just what-
And I'll pull that resolution.
I also have the E, the, I don't know if the employee still worked there or not, but the email, woo, y'all gonna make me deal with, dig into my. Um, the email was sent, um, to us for units to be demoed, was sent to us in, uh, twenty. I think I just sent it to Commissioner Council. Commissioner Council, do you have it? I think I just sent it to you. Could you tell me the employee's name that was, that sent the info? That sent the information to? Um, that's okay, I have it, Mr. Council. Um, Brockney Spencer. And it is, it says, per your request, building slated to be torn down. It came from Andre Gore and Brocksey Spencer from the Housing Authority. It came also from, uh, Ford, Ford Nelson. And it was sent to us January the twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Of the list of the nineteen buildings is slated for demo. And three hundred fiftyth Street is, they excluded the regional office, which is three oh two fiftyth Street. They said that the regional maintenance office would not be demoed. Now, all of a sudden, they read the three hundred fiftyth Street, the contractors just finished that building. My question is, why would they tear down a brand-new building with new floors, new cabinets, everything? And what do you all call yourself doing? And I do have the list of every email from twenty nineteen to now. from twenty nineteen to now, given with the demo disposition of the units in Lincoln Heights and the families that are in these units alone. Thank you.
Ms. Malloy, this is Rachel Joseph, the Chief Operating Officer. I just wanna, um, you mentioned that you were having trouble sending emails to members of the board, and I just wanna follow up on that.
Yeah, it came back saying, no such email.
Can you, is it possible for you to either screenshot or take a picture of that and send me a text with it so that I can have our IT team look into that?
What's your own email?
I will put it in-
Do you, um, my email is L I N K?
I, I'll write to you, Ms. Malloy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry that you experienced that. We have been experiencing some issues with, um, as we transition to the new, uh, not new, to Office three sixty-five and come into the twenty-first century.
My question is, all of a sudden, since all this rhetoric around the board, a lot of stuff is getting to be lost. The people fail to realize we are human. And I understand that very well. But I'm just so happy that there are, there are people that do care. I just wish DCHA staff, upper management, or executives, well, I'm, I don't wanna label. I just wish some of DCHA staff would be more receptive to what's going on in public housing. And also, as a voucher holder, I've heard some comments. I need for someone from voucher to contact me because I'm trying to find out what's the difference between the voucher that we have with New Community and the regular voucher that they have. Because, uh, people in two of our offsite, two of our buildings is us open, the Strand and Providence Place. Housing is not paying the residents, they're not sending the residents' rent over. Residents are not getting their, the residents is on zero rent, is not getting their utility check to pay their electric or water bill. And that's very alarming to me.
Ma'am, we're, we're-
But that's another discussion. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Next is Marlena Childs. Marlena Childs. Okay, Heather Day. Ms. Day?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. Um, I just, I'm actually working, so I can't speak too long. I just wanted to, um, touch base and find out what is, um, happening in James Creek as far as safety. There's been several shootings each week, daytime shootings, just all types of violence going on. And I feel as though there is no system in play when it comes to, um, like, our safety. Leaving out of my house, seven o'clock in the evening, there're gunshots. My granddaughter is four years old, having to duck under the table at one o'clock after we walk in the door because there're shootings. Like, what, what is the safety plan? And then also, um, I wanted to find out what, what, what's the deal with the contractors? I've had a request since the beginning of August to get my tub glazed. I keep being told, um, you know, that they haven't called me back. I don't have an appointment yet. When we talk about like the grass and the leaves and the maintenance of the property, we're being told that Regional is now handling it, which is, I think, a horrible idea because the property management itself was doing a better job of keeping the area maintained on the outside. Um, I mean, there's still the parking issue, which I don't think you guys are gonna be able to do anything about. But my biggest concern is, um, about the safety and about like the grounds keeping as far as the leaves and things like that. I actually have the yard that the possum lives in. And if there're piles of leaves and, you know, sticks and everything on the side, I mean, it's somewhere for it to actually live. I feel uncomfortable going to take my trash out because I don't know if the possum's gonna jump out or whatever the situation is. Um, I tried to contact the three oh one number, I'm told is DC Wildlife, but I feel as though we can prevent it by cleaning up the outside of the property. The same thing for rats and everything else. Those are the, uh, and then I had one more concern. I thought this call was addressing, um, the Melvo staff. I may have missed it because I jumped on a little late, but I wanted to find out an update on Elven's Road.
Okay, I, I can, uh, answer some of the safety issues down there. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, uh, we've been working very closely with the, uh, the team over at the First District, about the Southwest Quadrant. We realized there's a few individuals down here that have beef with each other, long-term beefs. Um, some individuals that just, uh, returned to the area that are causing a lot of problems. Um, we work with Commander Bryant down in there. She, she has put a team, uh, patrol officers down here along with our people to try to counteract some of this. We've made a number of arrests, but we noticed that the, uh, activity, some activity is still going on. So we're very diligent about it. We realize, uh, and are very concerned about it. And we're gonna be diligent about getting these remaining individuals out of that community.
Okay. Um, is someone able to give me an update on Elven's Road? Because technically, that's where I'm supposed to be, but my house caught fire over two years ago due to maintenance neglect, and nothing has been done. Only thing that's been done is I've been locked off the unit. The box to the lock is in, we know the tarp is still on the top of the house. Nothing has been done whatsoever. Um, I keep being told that the Melvo project is gonna do this and do that. Everything has been pushed back, so I have no update. I don't even think I received any information, which I requested to still receive information for that property because technically I'm a resident over there.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Ms. Day. The Melvo project has been pushed back. We were delayed almost a year waiting approval from HUD, which we have gotten. And now we've had to do some new, um, financing. And so some steps have had to start all over again. But I know that we have sent out communications, um, at least two in the last couple of months, advising the residents of this. And if for some reason we didn't send it to you, I will have my team check because we are supposed to send it to, excuse me, everyone who is a current resident or who is a resident of one of those properties and, um, has the right to, to write or is interested in returning. So we will make sure you get the updates, um, on Melvo.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Day. Uh, next is Annika Brooks. Annika Brooks. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Donna Towns. Donna Towns. Ms. Towns, are you able to unmute? I do see you on the screen. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Claudia McCormick. Claudia McCormick. Okay. Marlena Taylor. Marlena Taylor.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Ms. Taylor. You have five minutes. Thank you.
I'm only here because of the, because of my apartment. I've been living in, I've been a resident of Lincoln Heights for, um, over fifteen years. And I've had numerous, um, numerous break-ins. I've had my keys stolen by the maintenance people. I've woken up in the middle of the night with my door swinging open because of this. I've had several floods. The walls and stuff in here, they're molding and mildew. Um, I have a wall in my kitchen that as soon as you touch the wall, it crumbles like powder. All of these things, I've talked to so many because they keep switching. The resident manager, every time I talk to him, they're gonna do something about it. They're gonna do something about it, but nothing is being done. I've had my refrigerator at least three times go out on me and all of my food went to waste. Um, only for them to tell me that they would, uh, supply me with gift cards, and they never did. I just had to go without food. I'm like, literally had to go around begging for food just to get me until I received my benefits. And the last time the food incident, the, the last time my refrigerator went out, I wanna say was either in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. And I was told by Mr. Spriggs that I will be supplied with gift cards. I had a really bad flood because the people that used to live upstairs from me, they moved out suddenly and, um, but they're still, they still are renting the apartment, but they moved out. And it was a pipe that burst, and my whole entire house was flooded. So nothing was done about that. And now I'm dealing with the consequences of a flood, which is the mold, the mildew, the paint peeling, like paint. I have literally pieces of paint, pieces of ceiling that is hanging down, is cracks in my ceiling. I have about three windows that you can literally just take the whole window out and sit it on the floor. I just recently got locked out of my apartment. And on an accident, I wa- was going outside and accidentally put the bottom lock on. And I went to the rental office to get my keys, and they didn't have keys to my apartment. They said they didn't know what happened to it. The biggest problem that I'm having now is because I wanna say it's only maybe four or five people that live in my building. And now I'm dealing with roaches and mice. I'm not a dirty person. Oh, I constantly clean. So I don't understand why, why I'm getting these things. It's more than likely from all of the residents that they've moved out of these apartments. So they're now running to the, the few apartments that are, are still being occupied. I have woken up to mouse poop being in my bed. Every time we go in the kitchen, we have to thoroughly clean the kitchen because it's mouse poop everywhere. It's on the tables, it's under my microwave, it's on top of my microwave. It's on my count, on my counters. I have a, um, a cozy that goes over my toaster. It's on top of there, so I'm constantly washing it. Right now, I just walked in the house. I attend school every, from Monday through Thursday, from eight AM until one PM. And I come home and there's mouse poop on my dresser. I've sent pictures. I've contacted so many people as a resident. I personally don't know who it is I'm supposed to be reaching out to, to help me with these things. I contacted, uh, Ms. Hightower and Ms., I think her, her name is Ms. Watson. And they told me, they said they hear me and they're working diligently trying to find me somewhere to go. They offered me, um, one of the, the apartments that is being renovated. Well, it's like a house. I don't know exactly what it's called, but they offered me one of those. And this was back in, at the beginning of November. It's almost Christmas time. I was even advised to not decorate because they're gonna be moving me before Christmas, but Christmas isn't a little more than a week. I don't know what else to do. I don't feel sleepy.
Can we call you immediately after this meeting or if you, um, I don't see you on the list? Um, Alithia, um, can you send that information to Nona? Um, I don't, this sounds horrible and I'm so apologetic. Um, Ms. Taylor, let us have the director call you right away um, so that we can find out exactly what is going on and why your move has been just delayed and why we haven't addressed your basic health, um, and safety issues in your, in your unit. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Also, I've been on the waiting list for a Section Eight voucher for, my son will be twenty-four this year. So it's been almost twenty-four and a half years that I've been on this list. I've updated all of my information like I was supposed to. I don't know how often I'm supposed to update it, but I have updated it several times. And I still haven't even heard anything about that.
That's the same with you, yeah. In terms of the waiting list for vouchers, but let us address your immediate needs. We'll have someone contact you if you wanna, um, like, right, right after this meeting. Okay?
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. You, I see two names that I called that are, uh, let me know that they are now on the line uh, for their testimony. Uh, Ms. Claudia McCormick followed by, uh, Tavon Tate. Uh, Ms. McCormick, please proceed. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. I only left for a minute. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Claudia McCormick, uh, of the Potomac Garden Senior Resident Council. This is an email we're gonna send to our property manager, Mia Locke, Director Brenda Donald, and our Ward C Councilman, Charles Allen. The subject is "Maintenance Work Not Being Done." Dear Ms. Locke, we had a resident council meeting on November thirtieth where we talked about our work order project. We found out that the success rate for work orders that were called in was abysmal. In fact, I don't think any of the ones that were reported to us were completed. We're in the process now of having residents check back on their work orders to find out why the work wasn't done and when they're coming back. We're keeping a checklist to keep track of those updates. The meeting went on for an hour and a half. There were some real horror stories about dangerous conditions that were called in but have not been fixed. I called in one myself for amputee Gerald Tobias. No one ever showed up after two weeks. I called back and checked on it. It was listed as still pending with no explanation. The work order number is one five nine one seven four. Our president, Mr. Murphy, was especially frustrated, feeling that the senior building is being overlooked. We're well aware that the family building, which is much larger, has had thorough walkarounds with Director Donald and Councilman Charles Allen, producing a comprehensive plan to make the improvements needed. We've been trying for weeks to get Councilman Allen to come to the senior building too. We contacted our ANC Commissioner Edward Ryder, who also had trouble getting in touch with the councilman. He had to physically go to a meet and greet where the councilman was speaking and talk to him in person. We know how busy the councilman has been. Mr. Ryder said he agreed to a walk-around in the senior building. The date hasn't been determined yet. Mr. Murphy had the flu at the time the contact was made. But that hadn't happened yet at the meeting on November thirtieth. So some of the, um, things we discussed was to call in the media. Mr. Murphy has talked to a Channel Seven reporter. Another suggestion was to start a Facebook page for complaints from the Potomac Garden Senior Building. For now, we decided we would write this letter. We think you might be able to use some help from Director Donald and Councilman Charles Allen. We're also going to ask the Board of Commissioners for help at their next meeting on December fourteenth. The residents are demanding action. We have to do something. Thank you so much, Kenneth Murphy, President, Claudia McCormick, Secretary, Treasurer. Another very important matter is the Mayor's Stabilization and Reform Act. It calls for the city council to remove duly-elected members of the Board of Commissioners. It was announced so suddenly, there was no time to inform our residents to call our councilman. I just found out the day before the vote in an email from our Commissioner Janet Parker. I had to put up a special notice with our councilman's phone number on it. I called Ward Six Councilman Charles Allen's office to urge him to vote no on the bill on December sixth. It was, it seemed to me to be an obvious hostile takeover of the board to remove all the voices that we voted and elected to represent us. City Council Chairman Phil Mendelson pulled the bill late on the night of December sixth. He didn't have the votes to pass it. All of those calls from irate, public housing residents worked. That's what's in store for any further efforts to silence our voices. The mayor wants to remove Janet Parker, our Commissioner for the seniors and disabled buildings, as well as almost all of the other commissioners we voted for who actually live in public housing. It's a slap in the face to public housing residents, the very constituency that DCHA swore to protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Uh, next is, uh, Tavon Tate. Ready now?
Good evening. How y'all doing today?
Good evening. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Um, I'm just trying to, I'm here because the, I, I live currently at Bennetters. My television was stolen out of my house when I first moved there. Um, I reached out, Ms. Don, who, Ms., uh, Eve currently know my situation was going on. I just need some help. The, the situation has not gotten better. The maintenance guys is currently like harassing me, saying my kids are leaving trash outside.
Alan, thank you so much for calling me. I was in the bathroom. I thought I had five minutes.
Sorry about that. So I have like fees and stuff for trash then, like, I'm just being harassed at this point. Um, I have a thirty-day notice. Also, the house that I'm living in currently, the conditions. Me and my kids can't stay there now. We have a transfer- Also, the house that I'm living in currently, the conditions, me and my kids can't stay there now. We have a transfer. It's just a lot going on and I need some help. Hello?
Yes, Ms. Tate, um, in reference to your, uh, concerns that you have, I've talked to staff in reference to notices. So we will, I'll talk to you offline in reference to those. Uh, notices and we'll talk about that unit transfer that you've already received.
Yes, I know you, we posed the talk about it, but it's like, we're not getting nowhere with this, like. I reached out to you several times. I know, Ms. Eve, you're busy. You have a lot to do that you have. That you be doing too, but it's like, I need someone to really help me with. I don't know what else to do. We just moved there. From the ceiling been fell in on our, me and my kids head, from one place to another. Now we can't live in this situation. Like, I just don't know what to do. The TV is like it's allegations. Everyone swept it under the rug and covered it up. Now in the maintenance, it's, it's, it's just a lot on me and I don't know what else to do. It was just me and my kids.
Right. The TV situation was, was provided to risk management and if I'm not mistaken, they provided a. Means of property management. In reference to televisions, there is an issue, uh, with your unit and, uh, a continuous flood. So the u- the, uh, property management staff offered you a unit. So we just need a decision on whether or not you are willing to accept that unit. And then, uh, the thirty day notices that was issued, I told my staff that they needed to rescind that thirty day notice. Once it was issued to you and you provided me a picture of the notice that was done.
Yes, and the fees, they, they said that I'm leaving trash out. I asked for camera footage. Cause right over top of where they said my kids is leaving trash is the camera, but after I keep asking for camera footage, it's like. It's swept under the rug. No, it's just a warning. And like, I just need help to get out of this situation. That's all I ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Uh, Ms. Donna Towns. Ms. Towns, you can press star six to unmute if you're dialed in. Try star eight six, uh, but I believe it's star six if you're unable to unmute. Okay, I don't believe Ms. Towns is able to unmute. Um, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going into the testimony for non-residents now. A reminder, three minutes for non-residents.
I apologize. I did sign up to speak.
Well, Ms. Bishop, I'm sorry. I, I sure do have your name.
Well, that's fine. And I'm a resident.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
My name is Lulanda Williams.
Lulanda Williams. Okay, let me have Ms. Bishop speak first. And then we'll follow with you, Ms. Williams, okay?
Okey dokey.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop, you have five minutes. Please proceed.
Good eve- evening, everyone. It's not as. First, there is always a God that sits high, look low. As we keep asking over and over for things to be done right. Ooh, let me be clear and as Director Donald say, transparent. The people come first. The tenants of public housing come first. The people who fight for us come first. When we have been mistreated, mislabeled and disrespected. Therefore, we become a major problem to some, not all. That's not fair. Let's stop retaliating on the ones who speak up, speak out. Do their job, whether they get paid or not. I don't get paid a dime. And I work hard during their twelve hours each day. For the tenants of my building, the tenants in my community. That DC housing fail to acknowledge that they have failed. We never go into the past. Be talking within the last seventeen months. Of pity us first. That's all we keep asking for. But we get a slap in the face. A email. A letter, a special meeting. Y'all can't stop the good trouble. And hit me loud and clear, you will not stop the good trouble that the citizens of Washington DC have started. It's only began. If you want to remove the people who supported the majority of the public housing tenants and this section eight tenants. Oh. When the legislation get written up and the mayor agrees and the council agrees. That that audit was the main issue that should have been paid attention to. And gotten on top of. Ooh, let's get it together, y'all. Let's get it together. I'm willing. To do all I can do. Y'all gonna raise some angels. And some ancestors. Remember everything that Martin Luther King and John Lewis and everybody that protested and Rosa Parks and all the way that hurt your tuttment. This here gentification and this new plan of, ooh, ratting all these other things. I see it for what it is. Why y'all don't? Why y'all don't? But you want us to pay our rent or get thrown out? And it becomes another homeless situation that nobody is gonna take responsible for and say on a campaign. Oh, we might have had seventy-seven homeless people placed in a place, but we ain't said nothing about the evictions. Over and over and over again, their living conditions over and over again, the bonuses. Over and over again, but the tenants. We speak of. Thing, rats. Lead, asbestos, poor health, living conditions over and over. And the best y'all wanna suggest to us, oh, we'll get some developers to come in here to get a lease for ninety-nine years for darn near less than a penny. And only want to replace what housing has already put on this land with a special government on the hood. Have given us to protect us and y'all want to keep removing it. You take it and you set it and you let things get done, then upper cap a senior building catch on fire, quote unquote. Nobody wants to really accept the blame and treat those people wrong, but then you take seventy million dollars from somewhere. And buy it back. Don't give these developers the right to keep doing that to the people because y'all get these jobs to represent the people. So the way that it's getting done, it ain't done right. Until you bring the citywide advisory board and everybody with the fight for the right. Listen. To what we're trying to tell y'all. Past, present and future. The futures that we deserve it. Since I was a child, I deserved it. Since I became born in Washington DC, I deserved it. And no one has the right to take nothing from me. And I mean absolutely nothing. Because y'all ain't gave in yet. To acknowledging my constitutional rights. And I'mma be nice, but once again. I'm gonna keep on marching. And I'mma keep on speaking out for not just me, for every public housing. And if I upset you and disrespect you, oh well, oh well. Cause I was taught by a lot of the best that is watching. Me use my words to fight for the people. And until y'all realize it. Swish, swash, the law will be my favor. That glass of water has been ran over and ran over. Now it's time to replace. Cause with something in the water that wasn't right. And I'm gonna pit what's right back in that glass that I'm being. Thanks for all the good trouble that I've seen and will continue to get. Watch that audit report because another one will come out again. Oh, it's so much to be told. You think Patricia Malloy has something to tell you? I'm in every meeting and watching everybody doing everything and I will be there. Have a happy holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And if God bless me, he wants to bless you too. Have a good one.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, next for our non-residents, uh, to begin our non-resident testimony.
Hold up, Ms. Alithia, Ms. Donna Towns, I muted herself.
Okay.
Ms. Williams, that is a resident.
Yes.
Wait till after Ms. Bishop.
Okay, Ms.
I've been on this call since one o'clock PM on time. And I think I have, I, I think I have the right to speak.
Okay, Ms. Williams, please proceed, followed by Ms. Towns. Thank you. You have five minutes.
Okey dokey. Um, first of all, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for, um, allowing me to speak. Um, I have a number of issues, all the issues that every one of the residents that has spoken today have addressed. I also come to address. I live here in the Lejoy, um, Kelly Miller, um, property. I've been here for eight years now, this year. The first issue.
I don't know.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Hello?
We hear you, Ms. Williams. Please continue.
Okay, all right. Um, as far as the maintenance blitzes and all those things that you guys are trying to do as far as getting things done. Um, I'm not understanding, um, how is that gonna help the problem when it hasn't helped in the past? Like we said, I have number of issues from mold in my bathroom. When I went and took pictures just as well last year. And went to my maintenance, it was like, they supposedly, it fell in in my bathroom. So they supposedly went in, sprayed in, it didn't even take two to three hours. I had concerns then. I said, how is it that, uh, you went in and it took only a couple of hours for you to remove the, the mold in my bathroom? Um, they said, oh, that wasn't mold, it was something else, da, da, da. So they sealed it up, painted it up, make it look all pretty. Okay, a year later, here we go, and the mold is now reappearing. Me and my son. Which my son has severe asthma in my bathroom. When I take it to my manager, she tells me that that's not mold, it's lime around the tub. So I went and did a video around my entire tub where I'm not a nasty person, I'm not a dirty person. My home is clean. I clean a big bleach every day. I wash my dishes with bleach water, okay? So, um. If you look around the towel of my tub, you see clean spots and you see mold. You see clean spots and you see mold, all in the corners. You see stuff coming down the walls. Dripping from the window seal lines, the buildings are falling apart. At night, you can hear the, the, the building crackling. It's unnowled, which is taking me back. To what Ms. Matthews, Ms. Paulette Matthews was inquiring about back in twenty-twenty, when we had that meeting here. The big meeting with DHS, um, DCHA. And I have the packet still here in my hand about them tearing this down. They gave us one meeting with the promise of a second meeting, which we never had, okay? Um, they started fixing the senior building. They're almost complete with that. That was supposed to have been done two years ago, completed two years ago though. The four units, the Lejoy units that I live in, which are the buildings are old, roach, mice, rat infested. I'm on the first floor and I'm right on top of the boiler room. And I'm right now, I'm looking down where my radiator is. I'm looking down into the boiler room. Roaches is coming up through the pipes in my unit from other empty units. When I inquire every week, I should not have to call maintenance or call pest control every week to have them come and treat. And they only go into your bathroom and your kitchen and doing a little squirt here and squirt there. No. That's not sufficient. Um, I have an issue with, uh, a ticket issue. My vehicle where I live at was parked behind my window and a ticket was issued on my car that I did have no knowledge of. I have made numerous, uh, contacts with public safety, safety. There's this one officer that's always nasty with me that has hung up in my face on three different occasions. And all of a sudden, I receive a ticket notification from DC stating that I owe them five hundred dollars. For being parked on a property where I live in. Now, my question is, when we had our meeting last, um, last month with public safety. How is it I get a ticket from adjudication saying I owe five hundred dollars, but there was no ticket on my vehicle? I let that know, be known to the gentleman that we had the me- meeting with. I still have yet to got any kind of notification, call back, email or anything about this situation. All I was told to do was take my ID down to LaFont Pleiser and show them that I live here. That's not sufficient enough. I asked them to look into it. I gave them the officer name, I gave them the date of the incident and nothing. I also told, we have cameras on every building on my property. There's no reason why, as the young lady state, that there's no, that what is the purpose of the cameras? If you're not really gonna use them. And if you are, what are you using them for? Because bright day and bright daylight, I can't walk out my door without hearing of gunshots. And then when I look and see, it's some of the same people. So why are they still walking the street and we have cameras big as day that can get them off the streets because it's being seen? Clear day. So I have safety issues. Three years ago, four years ago, my window was shot. I live on the first floor and I live on the end. So no matter which direction you come, all the way around my end, there are windows. They had a shooting. My bathroom window was shot. It took two years for my window to get replaced. I went immediately and asked for an emergency move from this location. Not, not, maybe to another unit, maybe on the third floor, somewhere. I have still have yet to get that address. I am still here. So if someone was after me, God knows would probably have happened. Um, they said they would, like you said, they say they was gonna tear these buildings down without giving us another meeting. For me to find out when we get new management back in June, that there was a whole new management of DCHA. There is a lack of communication with the residents that live here that's paying the rent. And it's not fair to us. We're doing everything that we need to do in compliance to keep a roof over our head. But we're not getting the same empathetic and urgency of acknowledgement of these issues. We, uh, this Lejoy, we don't have a tenant, um, commission. We're now trying to form, me and another one, like we're trying to get a tenant, uh, committee coming, going. Just so we could talk about these things because each individual tenant is going to manager, but the managers isn't but so much they can do. I hear them saying that they are doing unit walkarounds and stuff, but all the issues that's in my unit, not one person has come. And I've sent out many of emails, have walked through my unit to see what's going on. I'm looking at my bedroom ceiling right now. Where it fell in and is now re-cracking. Water. The rooms ain't but so big, so it, it big, so it fell on my bed. With flooding, sewage backups and things of that nature. I have not had none of my things that have been destroyed, replaced. Like towels and rugs and sheets and things of that nature that I had to use to try to soak up all the water. like towels and rugs and sheets and things of that nature, that I had to use to try to soak up all the water in the unit. And that's been since Ms. Lee has been here. I've been here for eight years. There's no communication with the tenants whatsoever.
Ms., Ms. Williams, this is Commissioner Council. Um, Ms. Eve, are you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Can, um, you get with her this evening as well as Ms., uh, I think the young lady?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mouse, today before we, um, adjourn or right after we adjourn?
I'll be able to do that right after we adjourn, yes.
Thank you.
I would appreciate that, thank you. And I just have one more issue. One more issue before I get off. Like the other young lady, I had my son June 5th, 2001, when I entered and applied for when we walked out the hospital, the day I was still in my hospital robe when I went in to put in my application for housing to get a voucher, okay? Um, he is now about to be 22, with nothing. I did receive a call back in 2005 to 2006, and I have made numerous, um, calls and visits down to Level 33 before it was shut down years ago about this. I received a call in 2005, 2006. I had to reschedule because I was going to school out of town, okay? I was supposed to get a call back that January with no one calling me back. Me keep calling in month after month after month after month after month after month with no, no prevail, okay? Here we are in 2022. Every year I call in to give an update and to find out where my name is on the list, okay? For me to be told one time that because I accepted the public housing when I was homeless, that I can't get the voucher. Then for two, they're telling me, oh, we're still working on 2001. Okay, well, that's me. Um, no, ma'am, your application is 2003. I was informed. I know when my son was born, I know when I went in for the application. So I know there are issues that was going on inside of housing with vouchers, and I wanted to know why that wasn't addressed, because I'm still now fighting. And when I called just a few months ago, I was still being told that, um, oh, well, your name is still on the list, and we're still working on 2001 cases. Is, is, I'm, I'm not understanding the turnaround rights. I've inquired about self-sufficiency programs on our property. You know, all these things to help you, help us, so we all can be better. And like I said, to no prevail, there's no communication. We have not had a meeting on this property with no one of DCHA since before COVID, and it's not fair to us. I receive notices about vacating if I don't recertify, if I don't, uh, which is ludicrous to me, you're going to put me out because I didn't recertify on you guys dropping the ball. It is, it's ridiculous. My late, my work history, I just got my ledger like, uh, three weeks ago. I still have my work orders, they're saying closed, but not one person has been in here and fixed nothing. I was told about my radiators, the last year they came to take the top off of them, so we can't even adjust them anymore. And my living room is cold, and my bedroom is burning up hot. I have to open the window just to keep it decent, a decent in here, so I don't, so I can breathe. And it's not fair. When I, they told me, well, because there's water in the water heaters, we have to wait till the summertime. Well, the summer has come and gone, and no one has come to fix anything. So this is what I'm saying to you guys, is lack of, if I ask for, oh, my, my dining room, my living room, uh, I called in for screens. That's a safety hazard. I'm on the first floor, and I don't have screens. I called in work order. I haven't gotten a screen yet. It's been weeks for my windows, where someone can easily push my window up and just jump into my home. It's, it's, it's ludicrous to me. This is the third time that I've spoken, and just like I've listened to everyone else, please listen to me. I'm getting ready to get off, and I was just about to conclude. I don't want to be rude to anyone, but these are our concerns as residents. And like the young lady said, five minutes is not enough for all the things that are going on. I thank you for listening to me, and you guys have a happy holiday. I wish I could do the same.
Please look forward to Ms. Eve's, um, uh, phone call this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have my number? Sure, we sure can. Do I need to give you my phone number, or do you have my phone number?
I forward it to you, information, Ms. Williams. Ms. Eve has it.
Okey dokey.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, you can proceed.
Thank you. Move now to Ms. Towns. I think she's available to speak.
Hello?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
We hear you, Ms. Towns, but there's some, uh, feedback.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Hello? Hello?
Can you hear?
We can hear you, Ms. Donna. Go ahead and talk.
Hello? Hello, my name is Donna Towns. And I am a resident of, um, Park Morton, Park One Apartments since 2009. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, since 2009. Okay, I'm going to bring to you my issues and my, and my extreme disappointment in the management, uh, Park Morton Management um, persons named Ms. Diallo. I must name her name because her name would never be forgotten out of my, out of my mind. And I'm going to get started now. Okay, so at the onset of Ms. Diallo's managerial position at Park Morton was in August slash September 2019. And at that time, I had a ceiling collapse within my bathroom, and my bathroom collapsed, all, everything was right, all, everything, right? So they repaired my, they took hours, they, in, took a day, lot of hours to repair my ceiling. They just put the plywood up, they put the plywood up, and that was that. They were supposed to come back to fix the, um, up top uh, plumbing issues in which caused my ceiling to collapse. And I'm thankful no one was in the bathroom at the time, because there would have been a ceiling collapse upon a person within there. So I'm thankful that didn't happen. So they fixed it up. So from August, September, October, um, Ms. Diallo, I spoke to Ms. Diallo, Park Morton manager, a million times. When are they going to come to repair my ceiling? Because I'm just looking at mold everywhere, and there was a flood in my apartment. The flood went from, the, the, the bathroom is connected to the bedroom, and then it goes to the closet and everywhere. She said, oh, we're going to get someone here to fix your repairs and all of this and all of that. It did not happen. So I continuously to ask her, so in February, March, she wrote up a mandatory transfer for me to move to another location or my, my property was going to be moved to a different location within the building for storage to give the, the, um, lead, the, um, the repair persons to, um, have the room to restore. I had issues in my kitchen, my sink, um, the kitchen, it was a leak underneath the sink. I had to have a, 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 um, a bucket underneath the sink. I had to stop using my sink. There were tremendous drafts within my apartment, but I'm going to go past the draft, but then. So we going through this whole thing for the whole time, but now I'm at Park Morton, and this is a development which is under the NCI, uh, redevelopment, um, stage. So on, on, so I, I, I told you on March, on, in February, March, we said we, we had a mandatory transfer. That didn't occur. So as I asked her from time to time, when, when there were, um, uh, moving staff, because this was going to be the first phase of the lead removal from Park Morton. And, uh, my building was the first phase of the lead removal from Park Morton, and then the part over there, Park Morton, which is now in demolition, which was the second phase, it's under demolition. All of those buildings are gone. And my argument is, if those buildings were going to be gone first, why was my building, 620, including 618, the first one from lead removal? Because, because of the lead removal on, and they had not done any repairs on. And I continuously asked her, when the moving persons that were there to, um, center the furniture within the apartment for the lead removal, persons to be able to walk around the unit and do what they had to do, there was no response. But on May 30th, 2019, after continuous calls, continuous calls, Ms. Diallo asked me to come to sign the lease to be moved temporarily transferred half of my stuff down there because, um, Apartment 21 of 6 Morton is a much larger appoint, apartment. And up top, Apartment 33 is a smaller apartment. So half of my belongings, my property, everything was going to be half here and then half there, up in 33. But then, this is the time when we, the lead removal in which we were supposed to get transferred, I mean, sent to a hotel, a hotel for a week. Ms. Diallo asked me to come and sign this new lease on May 30th, 2019. I signed it based upon her trust in which my property was going to be centered here as well as centered up in Apartment 33. I signed the lease on May 31st, the very next day, less than 24 hours, Ms. Diallo came into my apartment and told the ma, the movers, the movers that had been there two weeks prior to everything, to transport my, my property upstairs. The movers became overwhelmed and were like, look, this is not where we are supposed to center the units in the, the, the furniture into the center of the unit. So they were overwhelmed and they left. She excused them from the unit. And then she began to, she had her all the counter, counterparts, all of these other DCHA, um, individuals. But she made the choice to start tossing all of my belongings into garbage bags, garbage bags, in which I was upset because she was destroying my property. So she said, Ms. Towns, are you going to be a bucket king, Ms. Williams? I said, no, you're hurting me. So that's when she went and called her manager, her assistant over there to call DCHA, um, police. Police came, removed me from my property, from my unit, had me in the hallway. I spoke to them for a long time, and then they told me I had to leave the unit. I'd leave the pro, leave the building, leave the building. So I asked them, can I go back and get my pocketbook? They opened up the doors and let me get my pocketbook, and they say, why can't she go back in here? Ms. Diallo say, she does no longer have tenant rights in here. I believe I had tenant rights in there. My rent was paid in May, thir, May, 2019, May, June, all the way until, um, my rent was paid all the way until, uh, my rent was paid continuously, but the lease agreement, and I'm have to get back on here, but I'm just going to say, when they removed me from my property, they told me to leave the property. I left the property just to avoid being locked up, put in jail, or taken to a mental institution because of threat of suicide. I was not suicidal at all, and the police believed me, and then they told me to leave the property. Once I left the property, this is when a dump truck, a DCHA dump, dump truck came and, uh, began tossing my property from Apartment 21 into the dump truck instead of what Ms. Diallo and I, I thought was, they wanted, well, anyway, they tossed all of my property. I was illegally addicted from Apartment 21. I was illegally, un, un, uh, uh, unlawfully addicted from Apartment 21. And then, so they took some property upstairs, but the major property, everything, the bulk of everything. I had brand new items, state of the art equipment, the desktops, antique furniture. I mean, I had everything in which I have acquired for my life alone. And, and my mother's furniture, my mother's antique stuff. So anyway, everything is gone. They tossed it into the dump truck. I come back on the next day, my apartment, um, Apartment 21, the whole living room was empty. All of my, all of my, everything, my, my lifelong belongings empty, my bedroom's empty, all bedrooms, everything empty, everything gone. So, so, so on, um, the 20th, the next day, Saturday, that's when I went there, my daughter, we, she, we, we tried to recover what we could recover, but as we recovered the little bit we couldn't recover, um, because we no longer have the key to apartment now. We no longer have the key to the apartment. We recovered what we, we covered. And then she told us that the items in which we recovered, because the lead inspector and Ms. Diallo say we have to close this building down. They closed the 620, 618 building, the whole attached apartment, they closed it down. And she said, uh, my staff is going to take this rest of this stuff upstairs to your apartment. Nothing went upstairs. Only thing that went upstairs, the only thing, really, I'm just, yes. And I want to say that Ms. Diallo didn't follow the section, Section 6 dash 1-800, um, laws applicability of employee obligations, and I lost everything. She didn't follow the rules of the, um, the Bill of Rights, the Tenant Bill of Rights, and she didn't follow five, all, all, all of those laws. And then I would say, getting back to the HUD thing, um, PH, Finding PH 2, I lost right there, all of my personal. All of my personal documents and everything. It's not about that's what's in the system. It was about what was in my whole apartment. And then as we moved to, uh, PH twenty-five, with enforcement actions, the, the lease enforcement, she made the decision to, um, not go through the mandatory transfer, um, legal laws to, uh, and then also give me a ninety-day notice to vacate. She aborted all of that. And then I'm gonna go to, uh, PH twenty-six. And with HUD's regulations, uh, uh, you have to do an annual inspection within nine months to fifteen months. Ms. Diallo was on the property, became the manager in August, uh, August, September twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty, uh, May twenty nineteen. I was living in mold conditions, mold conditions. She didn't follow that law. And, and I'm going to PH two twenty-seven in which the transfer, everything, and all that was going in there. You have to go through the, the, the manager, the, uh, she, it's not about her, it's about going through a process to go through the law, go through the, the, the managers are way above her. And then I would like to go to.
That was disrespectful to cut her off. She's a senior and you can tell she's disabled. That was disrespectful to cut her off.
Yes, she is. She's my resident.
Move forward. That was disrespectful to cut her off. Alithia, move, uh, forward, please.
Yes, can I speak clean?
Who is this?
I, I apologize, I'm, I'm very late. This is Deondra Johnson.
Yes, Ms. Johnson, I did call you early. Please proceed. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Ms. McNair. I just wanted to talk about, um, I have a termination lease agreement from the property management company due to a lot of harassment from my landlord, the owner of the property, which I never supposed to have met because I went to a property management company. Also, many maintenance issues that had failed DC housing inspections. So, I have found me a place. Uh, the landlord put the lease up packet in on the sixth. And I know that, uh, after the fifth, you will have to have a February, the first moving date. So, Mr. Waller, Mr. Abadman, and I want to thank him very much, has tried to get my, took my, uh, lease up packet and everything expedited for January, the first moving because of this issue. As far as me have to leave December the thirty-first. And I have minor children, don't have anywhere to go. So, just in case the inspection, because DCHA does inspection, doesn't pass, I wouldn't have anywhere else to go. So, the DCHA help their clients with issues and situations that come up like this. I have not been, at all violated my lease agreement. I have my rent paid all the time, my utilities. I haven't done anything. I just moved into a house last year, December, with a landlord that has a mental problem. Um, I think there was a fire at this house. I bet with her sitting out on the porch for hours, just very uncomfortable. And in the lease up packet, it has that a landlord cannot harass you and have to make sure that you're comfortable living into their home, that you're renting. So, I just would like a, an answer to if the inspection doesn't pass. And I have to be gone there, not trying to give me a, uh, a, a, um, anything as far as I could stay a little longer or anything. So, I would like to know, as a DCHA participant, where would me and my minor children go if the lease up, if the, if the inspection does not pass? Hello?
Yes, we hear you. Are you finished?
Uh, yes, sir, I'm finished.
All right. We've jotted and we will get back with you. Alithia?
Okay, Loretta Martin, this is a non-resident. Loretta Martin. Okay, I'll move on. Renee Carter. Renee Carter. Fern Collins. Fern Collins. And please mute if you're not speaking. Thank you. Uh, Mr. William Jordan, you're up for general comments.
Good afternoon. Um, again, my name is William Jordan. I'm a member of Ms. Hy's Park Morton Equity Plan Team. Um, I did want to share a few things, few thoughts. One, Ms. Jackson in the Mobility Supervisor, she should get a bonus. We gave her hell and she figured out how to get the job done. And I want, you know, make sure you all reward her. But also, we want you to add her to the Park Morton Equity Team so that we can have somebody we know we can work with and get some things done. Uh, also, I wanted to bring up that the bill first site for Park Morton, the first one, uh, the Avenue on Georgia Avenue, has had major safety problems. They're having an emergency meeting, uh, this Friday at noon. Uh, there's been ongoing safety problems. And so that you understand, Park Morton residents were moved there. And recently, in the last few years, additional Park Morton residents have moved there. So, it's a part of the NCI process. Uh, recently, last Friday, I believe, the building got shot up. Uh, but there have been ongoing problems for at least a year at that building. And I believe you all should be held responsible, um, not just, you know, general DC stuff. This is your building. You put the residents there and you need to make sure that it's taken care of. And again, there's a meeting this Friday at noon. And, uh, somebody from DMPAD and/or NCI somewhere should be there and bring to the table the necessary resources to make that a safe place. Uh, now I wanna get on, as we know, they're about to redo this board and basically silence the voices of residents. Um, uh, that's ridiculous. I'm gonna hold, um, council member Anita Barnes responsible. Moving forward, should that thing pass? Um, there's no, you know, there'll be no excuses, right? 'Cause it's ridiculous to silence the voices of the residents. Um, I don't wanna say with the Park Morton Equity Plan, one of the things in putting that plan together, you know, there would be multiple meetings with residents. As resident, there were meetings with DCHA people present and there were meetings without DCHA people. In the meetings without DCHA staff present, the residents would slowly begin to share their real thoughts, their real hopes, their real desires for this project, what they expected to happen, the advances they wanted to happen for their families. And it was in those, it was out of those meetings that we created a plan to make it happen. We didn't want a plan to depend on the director to implement, whether it was Garrett or, uh, Ms. Donald or Adrian Toddman. We wanted something that the residents and their partners could execute. 'Cause we don't trust you all to do it because you got too much going on and you don't even get it, right? And all of this discussion with reforms, contracts, it's never centered on the empowerment of residents to help solve and manage their own problems. It's always some superhero that's gonna come in with a magic plan and fix it. And it's not gonna happen. If you don't empower the residents to take care of themselves, you're fooling yourself and it's a scam. And so, I want to close with, there were the Resolution twenty-two nineteen passed earlier this year and then reiterated with twenty-two thirty-five. Okay, it's supposed to be a plan, self-sufficiency, employment, and all of those kind of things. And we have not received our plan. In fact, we were held hostage to that plan, right? And so now, we're gonna get a new board. I don't know if that board is gonna honor that commitment. So, I want to ask the first, I know Mr. Skinner, Ms. Lee, Ms. Blackston, are they still committed to ensuring that the self-sufficiency elements of twenty-two nineteen and thirty-five will be taken care of? I wanna know from Deputy Mayor Farchekio, whether he remains on the board or not? Will he remain committed to the promises that he made? And will Councilmember Barnes, will she come find out what was in that resolution? What was required? And hold the executive director and whoever that new board is accountable to what was promised, NCI, our own plans, and all of those things. Because in our whole process, we've reached out to every board member. And those board members who are being kicked off are the ones who were willing to communicate and hear us. And the ones who have remained ignored our outreach, right? They didn't, some of them didn't even respond back, no, right? 'Cause they don't think that if they don't wanna lower themselves to that. And that was unacceptable. We tolerated it because we thought we had a path to success. And now it's being blown up. And people think they will get away with accountability or unaccountability, and it will not happen. It will be war. If you don't honor what you promised to these residents. And so, I'm gonna ask nicely whether the director will commit to doing what she refused to do for six months with twenty-two nineteen. Thank you.
I will commit my staff that I assigned to do that, which, you know, it's Mr. Brian Harris. You had some other ideas about who you wanted to sit on that team and to facilitate it, which I agreed with. Um, but he can schedule a meeting with you and whoever else is part of that group, um, for the first of the year. But he can schedule a meeting. I'll ask him to call. I think he's out this weekend. I'll ask Ms. Heath as our follow-up. Go ahead and get that process, get that process started to, to make sure that we adhere to, um, the requirements that were written in that resolution.
There's some money to come with it.
I understand. I, I know it's in the resolution.
Empty hand.
I know it's in the resolution. Thank you.
Alithia, you can continue.
Thank you. Um, next is Rachel Ferguson. Rachel Ferguson. Okay, I'll move on. Um, Mary C., just the last initial C., Mary C. Okay, Darren Burns. Darren Burns. Okay, I see Daniel Del Palago. Mr. Palago, please proceed. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, almost evening to everyone. Um, it, it really does hurt my heart that we are here at the end of the year, the last Board of Commissioners meeting, and we're still hearing some of the very same issues from some of the very same people who have testified all year. There's been little or no resolution to their issues. One key theme that I've heard this afternoon is retribution. Ms. Tavon Tate spoke about all the issues she's had. She was displaced from her home where her ceiling caved in, moved to another property where the conditions were just as horrible. What does she get? She gets a thirty-day notice for her children, uh, allegedly throwing trash, uh, you know, on the ground. It just seems so unfair to me. And I think this is exactly what the mayor is trying to do to this board, is she's trying to silence the voices of people who are speaking up, not causing trouble, not being disagreeable, but asking the questions that board members should ask of questionable practices, questionable deals. So, I urge the residents of DCHA, and, and we heard this, are, are very clear that your voice is trying to be silenced. Let's not forget that the initial legislation that the mayor put forward would have, uh, cut out, meeting notices, um, to the public of, of, of the board. It would have cut out this very part of these meetings where residents get the only chance, once a month, to speak up on their issues. There's been some changes and that's because her ultimate goal is to quell the voices of dissent on here or what she perceives to be dissent. So, let's be very clear that as we end the year, nothing has improved, really. Residents are still dealing with the very same issues. The only thing that's, i- 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 it appears to change, the change that, uh, is happening is once again that the voices of people who have been saying this house is on fire are trying, are, are being silenced. So, I encourage all residents to call their council members, not just your ward council member, but your at-large council members too, and say this legislation is not empowering residents to be part of, to be a significant part of any way to really fix the real issues that are at play here. I thank you and I look forward to working with folks in the coming year.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is, uh, Kimanat Kasahun. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Kasahun is the last name. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Salis or Salas Vane. Okay, I'll continue. William and Mildred Webb.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, please continue, sir. You have three minutes.
Yes, I'm gonna try to be very brief. I know we've been here a long time. But, uh, I wanna preface our issues with the fact that I am very sympathetic towards the tenants of the D.C. Columbia and their issues and so forth. This is the other side of the coin. I'm a landlord with the property at eleven twenty-six Park Road Northwest, Washington, DC. Uh, when my wife and I moved out of the property, we completely remodeled the house from top to bottom, a finished base mess. Uh, it's five bedrooms, four, um, toilets and so forth. And when we moved out, um, we thought about moving back in because it was very nice. But the tenants that we got through the voucher program, they moved in and there were four individuals in the property. And as time went on, uh, there were things that were increasingly, uh, happening. Property was gradually being destroyed. And what I mean by that is we got in a, what I call a tear-up, fix-up cycle. And that was when the tenant damaged the property. The inspectors would come through, they would note the violations. We would fix the violations. And, uh, usually they were recurring. The damage would be almost the same thing every year. We had a, a property, a rental management company, Hattie Brown Realty, that collected the rents. And it was her duty to make sure that everything, all of their complaints were addressed in a timely manner. And they were. They had no problem with heat, no problem with air conditioning, nothing like that. No appliances. But what happened over a period of time, uh, there were things that started to happen. Uh, it would flood the bathroom and toilets and the plumbers would come in and find objects in the toilet. And as a result of that, it cost us thousands of dollars in electrical repairs, uh, new ceilings, new floors. And we continually asked them, told them, do not put foreign objects in the toilet. And we continually asked them, told them, do not put foreign objects in the toilet, do not let the water continuously run, which they did. We had astronomical water bills, which we paid. And we still to, to this day, we have to pay the three to seven hundred dollars a month for their water. And as this went on, uh, the house got set on fire. Before it got set on fire, Nationwide Insurance dropped us because they could not, when they would go on-site to inspect the property, the tenants wouldn't let them in. And we could not resolve any of the claims or anything like that, they were outstanding. So, we had to pay out of pocket. As a result, we have exhausted our annuity. We had to pay out of pocket. I'm not talking about hundreds, I'm talking about thousands of dollars to maintain the property, to make sure that it was at a level as the rest of the houses on that block. And right now, uh, we're at a point where we're at an impasse. My wife is seventy-five years old, I'm seventy-six years old. And we can no longer afford to, um, have these tenants because of what they did. Uh, and it, it will become a safety issue because we know the inspectors coming back and the, uh, whatever they did, I'm sure that there's some additional problems that they're gonna find that the tenants are respons- were responsible for because of the damage they did. We also found drug paraphernalia on the roof, uh, when the roof was inspected. The fire was a result of, uh, smoking and drug paraphernalia that was found on the, uh, back porch. And the last thing is they were subletting, uh, to individuals that were not supposed to be in the house, to the tune of eleven hundred dollars a month. And the way we found out was the actual person that was staying there told us that he, he, he and his wife and daughter had been living there for five years. And the reason, we had no way of proving this because we didn't wanna accuse anybody without having any facts. And the, the Columbia Heights, uh, Neighborhood Association, they sent us a letter saying that they suspected that there were quite a few people living in the house because of the, uh, inordinate amount of trash, the large volume of trash that was, uh, put out every week in the back. The DC inspectors came by and saw that it wasn't, uh, stored properly. So, we got fined for that, uh, and it's just been a nightmare where we have to sell house, I guess. That's the only other viable thing, but.
Sir, can I, can I break in? Hi, this is Brenda Donald, Executive Director. I'm not certain if anyone is already working with you through the Housing Choice Voucher Program on your complaints, or if this is the first time you're raising this. Can I have our ombudsman to follow up with you to, because I'm not quite certain?
Yes, well.
We have a lot of history, but I just wanna make sure that we're capturing whatever your issues are, and then we can go back to staff and see.
We itemize.
Yeah, so we can follow up, have our ombudsman to call, um, tomorrow and, 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 and follow up, and then we can find out who has.
We did, we did send a list of our concerns to House prior to the, uh, pandemic. And I think it was Ms. Daniels was the lead person.
We'll get current, we'll have the ombudsman follow up with you so that we can find out exactly what is going on and see how we can address it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the last. Okay, I have one more, um, individual on the list, Christopher Pear. Christopher Pear. Okay, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, that concludes the testimony list.
All right, with that being said, this, this ends our, our resident, I mean, our Board of Commissioners meeting for December of twenty-twenty-two. Our next one will be January eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Bob Webex, everyone, please be safe, try and enjoy yourself, and be happy. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Immediately.
Happy holidays to everyone.